Good afternoon. Welcome to our June 3 meeting of the Phoenix City Council. Before the formal City Council meeting convenes, we will begin with a meeting of the Park Central Community Facilities District Board. I will call to order the meeting of the Park Central Community Facilities District Board of Directors now. Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Board Member Conlin. Board Member DeCecio.
Here.
Board Member Garcia.
Here.
Board Member Gervais.
Here.
Thank you. Board Member Nowakowski.
Here.
Board Member Pastor.
Here.
Board Member Stark. Board Member Stark.
Here.
Jeremy, I'm here.
Thank you, I did. Board Member Waring.
Okay.
Here.
Board Member Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Guadalu.
Here.
Chairwoman Gallego.
Sorry.
Here.
Thank you.
Board Member Conlin is here.
Thank you, Board Member Conlin.
Board Member Conlin, since, uh, thank you for joining us. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes from September 18?
So moved, please. I move the approval of the minutes of the September 18 meeting.
Second.
We have a motion, and I think I heard the second from Councilman Williams first.
All those in favor, signal aye.
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 Any opposed?
The minutes carry unanimously. Board Member Conlin, do you have a motion on the, uh, to approve the resolution?
I move to approve, I moved, I moved to approve the resolution number PC-07.
We have a motion and a second.
Do any council members have comments? Or board members, excuse me, any board members have comments? Roll call.
Conlin.
Here.
Yeah, aye.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gervais.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yeah.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guadalu.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Thank you. Having conducted all of the business for the Community Facilities District Board of Directors, we will adjourn that meeting. Thank you to Board Members Conlin and Gervais for your continued service.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now call to order the formal City Council meeting for the city of Phoenix. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilman DeCecio.
Yes. Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guadalu.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here.
We do have an interpreter here to, uh, support our Spanish-speaking community. Thank you, Mario. Will our City Clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G-6703 through 6705, S-46551, 46647 through 46712, and resolutions 21831 through 21836.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion to approve mayor and city council board and commission nomination?
Yes, we have a motion, motion to approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We next move to items two through three, which are related to our municipal court judiciary. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on item two?
These are salaries.
Yes, we have a motion to approve item two.
Second.
Second.
Councilmember, comments or questions? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guadalu. Gallego.
Yes.
Approve 9-0.
Congratulations to Judge Jones, and thank you for your service. We next move to item number three, a motion to approve reappointment of Municipal Court Chief Presiding Judge B. Don Taylor III. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll stick in there.
Motion from our Vice Mayor, second from our Public Safety Committee Chairman. Any council member comments or questions? Councilwoman Stark.
I'm gonna have to hang up and call back in, because I'm having sound problems, but I totally support this motion. Thank you. I'll be back on in a minute.
Thank you so much. I too will be supporting this motion. Yesterday Judge Taylor was with us to help us better serve individuals experiencing domestic violence in our community, and I appreciate his innovation and service to the community. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes, and congratulations Judge.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
If you called Williams, you answered yes, I can hear you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams, I hear you now. 7-0.
Wonderful. Thank you to Judge Taylor for his continued service to our city. We next move to the liquor license applications portion of our agenda. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion to approve items four through 16, except items 12 and 14.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you to Councilwoman Williams. And Councilwoman Pastor, if you'd like, but I did hear Councilwoman Williams first.
It doesn't matter.
It's the mask.
All those in favor, let's see, do we need a roll call on this for our, from our clerk?
Mayor, it can be a voice vote.
All those in favor, please signal aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We next move to item number 12, which is South Mountain Distillery. It is a liquor license application in Councilmember Garcia's district. We have four residents wishing to address the council. I will turn to Councilmember Garcia for any comments and to introduce the item and a motion if he wishes.
Mayor, I would like to move to continue the item, item number 12, to the June 17, 2020 formal meeting.
Second.
Second.
A motion to continue and a second. Um, let's see.
Pastor.
Um, we have with us, um, the applicant, Phil Carlson, so I guess we would take comments only on the motion to continue at this point, but I, I guess, we'll open up to Mr. Carlson if he has any comments, and the comments can only be on the motion to continue.
We don't have any issue.
Wonderful.
Continuing.
Um, we have also the Schneiders here. If I could go to Jeremy Schneider, are you comfortable with the continuance? Or do you have any comment on the continuance of two weeks?
Hello?
Hello, Jer, we can hear you.
I said I oppose it, if that's what you're asking.
Okay.
And I have, I have some reasons behind it, so.
And you could, if you, you have, um, two minutes to tell the council why you oppose the continuance, but not on the substance of the application.
Okay, um, so what I oppose it for is, uh, um, it's within a school zone, um, also traffic. I, I live the, I'm on the house right across the street, and, um...
I'm sorry, Jeremy, um, the motion is whether to delay the vote for two weeks, so your testimony can be on whether you are okay delaying and have it coming back in two weeks or, or not, but not on the substance of the application. I'm sorry, it's very confusing.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm sorry, this is my first time on this, so, um, yeah, I, so, um, yeah, I'd definitely say delay it, and then I'll come back at two weeks.
And, um, I don't know, I am guessing, since Donna shares a last name with you, you might be together, is she, can we assume everyone's okay with the two weeks delay?
That is correct.
Wonderful.
Yeah, and also, and also I have my, my neighbor next door, I'm just kinda speaking for her, because they have the coronavirus, the husband does, and she's not in the, the state of mind right now, so she asked me for, to speak for, and that's, uh, address 8830, and it's Ross Patterson.
Wonderful, um, thank you so much. We will look forward to hearing from you in two weeks, and perhaps we can address some of the concerns in, in the interim. So we will now, um, uh, thank you for your testimony. We will now vote on a motion to continue, so a yes vote delays it for two weeks into our next council meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
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 By unanimous vote, we have continued the South Mountain Distillery for two weeks. Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. We next go to item number 14, which is the Rocky Point Restaurant and Bar, an application in Councilmember Waring's district. I will turn to the council member to introduce the item and for a possible motion.
Uh, yes, is the, was the applicant there? My understanding was they were...
Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Waring, we do have the applicant Alexandra Morales.
Why don't we hear, if you're willing, Mayor, the presentation, and then maybe the applicant to respond?
Okay.
Okay?
We also have Jennifer Wingen-Roth, who is the License Services Manager, who can present on the item. Yes, but I think it's Jennifer first, Jennifer. Okay, Jennifer. Okay, we can have the applicant speak first in the interim, and her name is Alexandra Morales, and we will work on unmuting her.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Great. Hello, I am Alexandra Morales. I am owner of Rocky Point Restaurant and Bar. We have about 50 employees in the Plaza of High Street in Desert Ridge. There's about 15 to 20 businesses within that location. We have limited traffic, but our, my mission with building Rocky Point Restaurant and Bar was to build a safe environment where families and the community can come and enjoy our delicious food and our delicious drinks. We applied first, time was around beginning of the year, and we were denied because my husband, fiance was there to support me during the interview with the police officer. However, they mentioned something about a hidden ownership, however, that's not the case. I went through that application to be able to turn in a new application and get a new fair interview with the police officer. However, they denied me that request to be able to get a new interview. After that, I'm here to ask if we could be allowed to have our liquor license. Unfortunately, without a liquor license in our location with the limited traffic that we do have, I fear that both I will have to let go of my employees and I'll have to go bankrupt. I hope that that will not be the case, but I do have fear for that. As far as experience, I grew up in a family of four, and my mother has about 16 brothers and sisters in Mexico. Now, our family extended has a chain of restaurants in Mexico, so I grew up in the industry. I know, um, I grew up going to restaurants and seeing how it's worked from behind, so I'm fully aware that with my experience that I had from growing up, and still, I'm 25, I'm learning to work, I'm a mother of five, I wanna build a location that is for family to come and enjoy, and my hope in that is to make it a safe environment for everyone. We don't have any close school zone or anything like that. The restaurant has been established for bar and restaurant five-plus years. So I really, I'm just asking if you could please allow us to have our liquor license. I know during this whole coronavirus situation that we're all going through, our business is gonna be on survival mode, and hopefully with your guys' help, I can move forward and truly just make something for both my kids to have when they're a little bit older, and us as a family to grow and expand there. It's a family-built restaurant, so. And I would really hate till I have 50 employees, or close to 50 employees, all looking at me, and I really hope that I'll be able to help them and their families keep their jobs, because I know without a liquor license, it's all gonna be a very hard route from here
Thank you for your testimony. We'll turn to Councilman Waring.
Uh, so are we able to hear from the police?
Councilman, we will attempt to have staff do a report. We have Jennifer Wingen-Roth from License Services.
Hi Mayor, can you hear me okay now?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Jenny Wingen-Roth, I'm with City Clerk. Item 14 is a request for a new liquor license for a restaurant. This location was previously licensed and may operate with an interim permit. Staff recommends disapproval of this application based on a police department recommendation for disapproval.
Good afternoon. My name is Officer Tim Tours of the Phoenix Police Department, representing the Black Mountain Precinct. Back in December, I received a liquor license for the Rocky Point Restaurant at 5310 East High Street, over in the Desert Ridge area. That first application I received had listed Alexandra Morales as the manager and the only person that would be in charge of the liquor. I set up a, I set up a meeting with her to interview her, to see, to, to ask some questions about the application. Like she had said, the only thing she put on that application for experience was stay-at-home mom and a student, so naturally I had some questions for you. When I contacted her by phone, I was introduced to a gentleman named Frank via speakerphone, who set up the meeting with me. I went to the restaurant the next week and met with Alexandra and the Frank I had met. I started asking them some questions about their experience with restaurants, and during this interview, I activated my body camera, my, my city-issued bodyroom camera. I asked them what experience they had, and the only thing they both told me about restaurants was that they had both worked at a sushi restaurant in the past. Being that Frank was answering a lot of my questions regarding the application, I told Frank that I needed his full information as being in charge of the liquor license, so I asked for his name, date of birth, his first name, last name, and date of birth. He gave me Frank Powers with a date of birth of May 9, May 9 of 1979. Frank also told me during that interview that he was the owner of the restaurant, and Alexandra was just the applicant for the license. Naturally, when I left the business, I went back and tried to do a workup on Frank, and I could not find any information with the Frank, with the name that he gave me, Frank Powers, and the date of birth. I then called Alexandra back on the phone, and she gave me a completely different last name for Frank, because I was trying to figure out if I had the information correct. She gave me the last name of Abbasi, A-B-B-A-S-I, with the same date of birth. I couldn't find anything with that last name either, so I started doing some research, and I was able to find a Faribor's Abbasi, and I identified it as Frank through his motor vehicle apartment, driver's license, and picture. That gentleman's date of birth was actually 5971, not 5979. So, fast forward to March, Alexandra reapplied for a license again, um, listing this time, Frank Powers Abbasi as the, one of the, uh, one of the investors for the property. So, since, since the March 3rd, uh, application, they've put out some, some advertisement for the restaurant, and Frank is still claiming that he's the owner of the restaurant through this, through these applications. Frank also contacted other police officers for off-duty, for some events they were gonna have at the Rocky Point Bar, and, and claiming he was the owner and telling them he needed officers. Alexandra, on her second application, did list that she, her family has owned restaurants, and she's been a part of the restaurant business in Mexico, but I've had, I have no way of verifying that information. So because of the, the first interview, and the deception, and the, the job history that I have as student and, and stay-at-home mom, I recommend, or deny along this particular license. The applicant has not demonstrated the capability qualifications and reliability to hold and control a liquor license in Phoenix.
Councilman Waring, do you have additional questions or a motion?
I think I wanna make a motion to deny.
Second.
And Councilman Waring, is your motion to deny based on the police department recommendation for disapproval?
It is.
Do we have a second on the, on Councilman Waring's motion?
Yes, good.
Well, any additional comment before we go to roll call? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski. Pastor. Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Sorry, my, the quality of this stuff, you would have passed.
Williams.
Yes.
Guadalu.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 8-1, the disapproval.
Thank you. City Clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolution, new business planning and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
I will turn to the Vice Mayor for a mo, a motion in, in second. We, as a city, have received 183 comments from people wishing to speak at our budget items, which, there are several budget items today. That would represent more than six hours of testimony. Knowing that we will do that first, if there are any council members who have pulled items and who might wish to, um, put those back on the omnibus agenda, I will then turn to council members to see if they have any changes. At our policy meeting on Tuesday, I will be scheduling open comments, and so council members who had comments they wanted to provide today would also have an opportunity then if they, um, see fit.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor, it's Jim Waring. So I had pulled, you're not gonna believe this, items 53 and item 100 to say what good ideas and how happy I was to see them, but I will avail myself of the opportunity to put them back on consent, per your guidance.
Thank you, and I, I think we will look forward to your comments on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Um, hearing that, Vice Mayor, and giving you a motion to adjust for 53 and 100, Councilman DeCecio.
Oh, I had a couple I had pulled, but there just no votes right off the bat, just 56, 58, 62, and 67, I think was already pulled.
Okay, I think those we cannot adjust, because it, um, I, I think for those, we do need to leave those in, in the motion, so that you can vote. No. With that, Vice Mayor, um, do you have a motion?
Yes, bear with me, just to make sure I did it right. Motion to approve items 17 through 128, except the following items 41 through 46, 56, 60, 62, 67, 97, 99, 127, and 58. Items 22, 55, 99, and 110 have been withdrawn. Item 128 is requested to be continued to June 24, 2020, and excluding these items for public comment, 43, 44, 67, and 97. Did I get that right?
That sounded perfect to me, but, uh, other council members and staff, how'd we do?
It sounded good to me, I'll second.
Mayor, did you, did, uh, did the motion include item 126? To exclude? Which one? Vice Mayor, did your motion include to exclude item number 126? I believe it was supposed to be excluded of the omnibus motion.
It's not excluded. I had 127, not 126.
Okay, so we will include 126 as well? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Stark. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams. Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Guadalu.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. We next move to the budget portion of our meeting. Item 41 is a capital hearing on the 2020-2025 Capital Improvement Program, which is particularly related to some building projects we are doing at the city. I will now declare the hearing open. Is there anyone wishing to speak on our capital improvements? We do not have any cards on capital improvements.
Mayor, I don't believe we do.
All right, the public hearing is closed. Item 42 is the adoption of the 2020-2025 Capital Improvement Program. Do we have a motion? Uh, just to clarify, the, the motion, which I think, uh, was, was the mayor, was the adoption of resolution twenty-one, eight hundred and thirty-five to twenty-twenty capital, twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-five Capital Improvement Program, was that Councilwoman Stark and Williams' motion?
Yes.
That works, Mayor.
Wonderful. Um, thank you. Uh, council member comments on the Capital Improvement Program? Uh, roll call.
DeCiccio?
Yeah.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Waring?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. We next move to, uh, the budget portion of our meeting. Item forty-one is a capital hearing on the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five Capital Improvement Program, which is particularly related to some building projects we are doing at the city. I will now declare the hearing open. Is there anyone wishing to speak on our capital improvements? Uh, we do not have any cards on capital improvements.
Mayor, I don't believe we do.
All right, the public hearing is closed. Item forty-two is the adoption of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five Capital Improvement Program. Uh, do we have a motion?
I move to approve. Good.
Thank you. Uh, for our, um, city staff, was, did the motion address what we need?
Yes, Mayor.
Uh, just to clarify, the, the motion, which I think, uh, was, was the mayor, was the adoption of resolution twenty-one, eight hundred and thirty-five to twenty-twenty capital, twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-five Capital Improvement Program, was that Councilwoman Stark and Williams' motion?
Yes.
That works, Mayor.
Wonderful. Um, thank you. Uh, council member comments on the Capital Improvement Program? Uh, roll call.
DeCiccio?
Yeah.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Waring?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Pass is eight to one.
We next move to item forty-three, which is a public hearing on the adoption of the tentative twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one annual budget ordinances. I will now declare the hearing open. Uh, there are several individuals wishing to speak on this item. I will begin with Ann Ender, followed by Devin Allen, followed by Lily Montgomery. Uh, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Gallego. Um, council members and Mayor Gallego, thank you so much for this time. Um, I will be brief, I'll try to be brief. Um, I, um, I support the current public safety budget and adamantly oppose the use of any monies to fund the Office of Accountability and Transparency. The Phoenix Police Department should be adequately funded in order to recruit and vet qualified candidates in order to protect our growing city. The Office of Accountability and Transparency is initiated by council, as initiated by Council Garcia, um, is unnecessary and duplicitous to the current civilian oversight boards who are aboard, are boards of volunteers.
Is this about capital or is this the budget?
I'm sorry, I thought it was for the budget.
It's, uh, so we have about eight folks who are speaking on the budget ordinances and then overwhelming majority is on forty-four. Um, I guess I will turn to either our budget director or city attorney.
I apologize if I hit the low one.
It's very confusing. Um, I think that it is.
Mayor, this is the city manager. Item forty-three is a public hearing for item forty-four, so actually, you could take all the cards for forty-four and forty-three together in this public hearing time and that would, uh, that would meet the intent.
Uh, wonderful, unless, um, council colleagues, uh, object, that is what I will do and we, and we will give, uh, Ms. Ender a little bit of time to, to make up, although not, not a ton because it's going to be a heck of a council meeting. Um, so, uh, Ms. Ender, you can continue and then after that, I, I will see if any council members have feedback.
Okay, great. Um, I was just saying that I, I felt that the, um, Office of Accountability and Transparency is duplicitous to the current boards that are, um, boards of volunteers and I think the message that's being sent that we're going to pay to have boards oversee the police department is a, is a very negative message. I also think that, um, Councilwoman Garcia, who, i- i- is not representing the city and the city's best interest, he's, um, continued to, um, it's, I think he's investigating some of the things that have happened over the last few days and when he thinks that excessive force was used after the first night of violence that caused close to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of damage downtown, that to me is unacceptable. I think that, um, Councilwoman Garcia would better be served to pay attention to his district who, um, has the highest rate of violent crime in the city and that's based on the calls for service that are public record. And I would ask him that if we didn't have our police department, then what communities and who would be helping to help all of us if we were being robbed or being held at gunpoint? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before we go to, uh, Devin Allen, any, uh, council members comfortable if we just take all of forty-three and forty-four together during this public hearing?
Mayor?
Hearing no comments, uh, Councilman DeCiccio.
Mayor, just a quick question on that then. So we have a hundred and sixty cards for the budget?
I think it was a hundred and eighty-three, um, this, uh, this was, um, not some, it was counting, um, um, m- me counting off of paper, so, um, I would not try, that is a, uh, not a precise estimate, uh, but we, we also have, um, let's see, uh, two hundred and twenty-eight emails in support, one thousand seven hundred and forty-two in opposition, a hundred and nine with other comments, and twenty-two that were neutral on item forty-four.
Oh, okay, and then Mayor, before you go into that, I think you ought to probably put a motion on the table so people know what they're talking to, just giving you a thought on that.
I can't do a motion during the public hearing.
You can do it on forty-four, is what I'm trying to get across, is that, there's a reason that there, the, those two things are always bifurcated, is that you have your public hearing, but then you actually have the motion. Oh, go ahead, Mayor. But you, but you have a, you give the, the public at least something to talk to.
Mayor?
Uh, Councilwoman.
This is Pastor. Um, I'm a, I'm, I'm confused of what we're doing. So we're putting items forty-three and forty-four together and all the comments together, um, so then we'll be talking on forty-three and forty-four all about the budget?
Uh, yes, so item forty-three is the public hearing, so as the city manager pointed out, an appropriate time to have public comment.
So then we'll be speaking about item forty-four?
Yes.
Mayor, I think in the interest of, of clarity, you could just take those who signed up for the public hearing, or forty-three, take those eight, and then to Councilman DeCiccio's point, if you wanted to have a motion on the floor for the comment, you could do that separately with forty-four. So either way works and probably just to, to distinguish it in the way people have signed up, uh, Mayor, I apologize for my earlier quick, quick overview, you should probably just go with forty-three and then forty-four for those who signed up for forty-four.
Perfect, uh, good advice and, and I think we're just, uh, trying to get as many people... Right, I think that makes sense. Um, thank you to, uh, city manager and council for feedback. Thank you to Mr. Devin Allen for his patience while we discuss procedures, so we will go back to public comment to those who have signed up on forty-three. We will begin with Devin Allen, followed by Lily Montgomery. Devin, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Um, you know, I've never been held at gunpoint or robbed, uh, as I'm sure the previous speaker has not either, uh, and I can't really see why our police department would be so aggressively opposed to civilian oversight of their activities. Um, I'm appalled by the violence I've seen enacted by our police officers and I think it would be unconscionable to pass a budget that does not fund the civilian review, view board and the Office of, uh, what was it, Vet Trans, Transparency, I believe, uh, that was already voted on, right? This is something that you're, this council has already approved, we're just debating whether you're going to fund the thing that you already approved, so, uh, I think it would be unconscionable to, uh, to not fund civilian oversight further, really, any increase in oversight can only be good for our communities. How could it possibly be that good cops would be harmed by oversight of their activities unless their activities are harmful to the community? Uh, that's all I have to say. Let's fund this, let's fund this community review, let's fund transparency, we need this.
Thank you. Lily Mo, Lily will be followed by Omar Alvarez Perez.
Hi, I'm here, can you, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Um, thank you, uh, city council for opening this up to, uh, public comment. Um, this is my first city council meeting in, um, ever, so taking a book out of my mother's page, um, I would like to agree, um, wholeheartedly, uh, with a civilian oversight, uh, funding a civilian oversight committee, um, I think that it is great to have, have a separate entity that, uh, can oversee the police force, which we have seen, um, in, uh, is one of the highest rankings in the country for overt violence, unnecessary force, um, and sexual and racial violence. Um, I think it is a great thing to have and I think as you will, uh, hear from the community outside of your door, uh, we all want this. So, uh, thank you so much for your time, uh, and I hope you guys have a great day.
Thank you. Omar will be followed by Randy Paskett. Omar, the floor is yours.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay, uh, thanks. So, good afternoon, council members. Um, I'm just here today to ask you guys to reconsider the proposed budget for the following fiscal year. I think for too long, our city has lacked the proper funding for community development, addressing homelessness, and expanding public transit, and that's just to name a few. Meanwhile, Phoenix PD has continued to receive increases in the budget year after year and I really don't think that overpolicing in our neighborhoods does more damage, uh, does more good than it does damage. I ask you to urge our city manager to please revisit, uh, the proposed budget plan and reappropriate these funds to better serve our city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Randy will be followed by AJ Marsden. Randy, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much for your time, guys. I don't want to parade on for a long time because you know everybody's calling in for the same reason, uh, we need to divulge these funds in a different way. I'm getting into community development and commercial real estate in Arizona and community development and enrichment, very much important, as well as the transparency and accountability of the police officers that are supposed to be serving us, more so hurting us. All the people out here need this, this community to continue to be enriched and we need to focus more so on environmental services, transportation, criminal justice, public safety, nine hundred and forty-four million dollars is outrageous. The least we could do is take at least forty to fifty million dollars out of that budget to put somewhere else, but I know nothing about running a city, but all I know is this needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you. AJ will be followed by Marcus Reed. AJ, the floor is yours.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and council members for this public time to speak. I am AJ Marsden and I live at Eleventh Avenue in Camelback. I do support the city budget as presented and I want to thank city manager Zerker and the Budget and Research Department for making a revised balanced budget, a budget for Phoenix that provides services for a safe, healthy, and vibrant city, and that after presenting a budget with more abundant tax revenue. Deputy City Manager Barton even answered my questions the three times I contacted him about budget items and the budget process. I also want to thank the offices of Councilwoman Garcia, Vice Mayor Guardado, Councilwoman Pastor, and Councilwoman Stark for chatting with me about some budget ideas when I contacted them. I talked to some of the council members themselves as their schedules permitted, I know the other council members are also open to chatting, I just have not contacted their offices yet. In addition to the city budget, these last few weeks, everyone above has worked to place COVID release fundings into the community to help support Phoenix residents and businesses. Thank you for that. I appreciate the open communication and I look forward to having more discussions as the year goes on. I know there will be discussions when tax revenue comes in as the economy picks up and when the Oat Director is hired, conversations will happen to flesh out the details of the framework. As for the city budget that is presented right now, I see funding for parks and libraries, LED streetlights, police fire, block watch operations, transit in streets, you know, human and neighborhood services, there is even funding for arts and culture, so it looks like aspects of a safe, healthy, and vibrant city are covered. I look forward to COVID restrictions being lifted so we can all get back to building up the community and enjoying all that Phoenix has to offer. And honestly, if anyone would like to chat with me more about community building instead of just listening to each other for two minutes at a time, I'm open for it and I'm not hard to find. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Marcus will be followed by Michelle Kuhn. I am having a hard time hearing Marcus. Marcus? Okay, uh, Marcus? Okay, um, then we will go to Michelle Kuhn. Michelle, the floor is yours. Michelle, can, can you hear us? Okay, that is my, uh, final card, or, uh, to speak on item forty-three, uh, the, uh, public hearing is closed. I will next go to item forty-four. Item forty-four is the adoption of the tentative twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one annual budget.
Mayor, members of the council, yeah, Mayor, members of the council, the budget proposed today reflects the vote of the council two weeks ago and so Deputy City Manager Jeff Barton is here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Given the number of cards?
Mayor?
Uh-huh, yes.
Um, so as we, as we sit here, we're hearing a chorus outside screaming, uh, Black Lives Matter, and I want to thank all the people who made it down here and I know not everyone was able to speak. Um, we can, I want to acknowledge what's happening across the country, what's happening here in Phoenix, what's happened in the last, uh, week, and because of that and because the context has shifted and because I think the responsible thing to do is to respond with policy change, I would like to ask Deputy City Manager Jeff Barton if there's a possibility to fully fund the civilian review board and the Office of Accountability and Transparency and I would like to motion to add that to this budget. To fully fund the Office of Accountability and Transparency, um, I know in this budget we currently have four hundred thousand, so, uh, for it to be fully funded, uh, I would motion to add two point five million dollars, uh, to this budget.
Mayor, I couldn't hear the motion, can you repeat it?
Motion is to add two point five million dollars to the Office of Accountability and Transparency to assure that it is fully funded.
Thank you.
Mayor, just a quick question, is that a motion for the budget and to add the two point five million, or is it just two point five million on its own?
It's to approve the budget and add two point five million for the Office of Accountability and Transparency.
Got it, thank you for that, Councilman.
Uh, council member, your motion is to move item forty-four being the ordinance S forty-six six five oh, the tentative twenty-twenty, twenty-one annual budget, be adopted with an additional expenditure of two point five million dollars for, uh, civilian oversight.
Yes.
Mayor, this is Deborah, I have a, I have a question. So, um, how would we find another two point five million?
for it, but my understanding would be to find money within the existing budget to increase the Office of Accountability and Transparency to 2.5 million, or by 2.5 million?
By 2.5.
By 2.5 million, to make it a total of 2.9 million? In that case, I would recommend, in talking with the deputy city manager, what we would need to do would be, within the existing resources, would be to decrease the contingency amount by that amount and shift it to that, so the overall budget remains balanced. I'll just turn to Jeff on that.
Mayor, members of the council, the city manager is, is exactly correct. The budget that we have presented to you today is, is balanced, as we are required by both state statute and city charter, as I've emphasized to you multiple times throughout the course of this adoption process. So, what we would have to do is take the money from somewhere else. The easiest place to do that right now, without having to harm another department, would be to take it out of the contingency. However, what I would also say to that is, we would need to then replenish the contingency to its current level at some point in the fiscal year for rating agency purposes. I would not want to take the contingency down and not replenish it.
And as a follow-up question, how quickly could we replenish it? Does that become an exercise in you, looking at ways, looking at savings?
Councilwoman Stark, mayor, members of the council, yes. What it would have to do would be me looking at the end of the fiscal year, possibly, for any unanticipated savings that we have over and above what we've already estimated in our balancing actions. So, if you do recall, part of our 27 million dollars that we cut already did include some balancing and some estimating of savings already. So, the savings would have to come over and above that amount in order for me to then replenish the contingency.
So, following up on that, for example, I think in February, we did a budget amendment and gave some additional funds to the council offices for additional staffing. Could we give that money back to you? Would that help? Yeah, I'd be happy to do it.
Mayor, members of the council, yes, you could. You have money that you've added to your budget in the current year, as well as in the upcoming base fiscal year, or our base budget. So, you could give those monies up to offset that. Again, I don't know if each of you would do that collectively, but again, that, that's what you, you could do that.
Well, I for one would be happy to do that.
Thank you, councilwoman. Additional council comments?
Mayor.
Councilwoman.
So, Deputy Barton, so what, how much is in the contingency fund?
The contingency fund is right now in the general fund, about 56 million dollars, and I'm rounding, so it's about 4% of our total operating budget. And again, that, that's where we have tried to maintain it. The council did establish a goal to increase it to 5%, and we've been stuck at 4%. We have been increasing the dollar amount, but we have not yet increased the percentage. And I will say, again, because again, I think it's important for me to emphasize this, our contingency fund at 4% and 56 million dollars is really not that large, given the size of our budget. If we did have a financial difficulty or situation that required us to use our contingency on an indefinite period, it would not last us that long. Best practices, that number should be higher than what it is right now, and that's one of the things that the CFO Denise Olson and I are constantly at battelet with the, with the rating agencies about the size and, and the, the size of our, our contingency fund.
Mayor, Petzner again.
Yes.
So, if we took 2.5 from the 56, my understanding, or what I'm hearing is, we'll be at 54 something, or 53.5, that you're okay with that, as long as we replace it in the future?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Jeff, would it be easier if we adopted the budget as is, but made a commitment in the next year to work diligently to find the additional 2.5 million?
Mayor, members, sorry, Councilwoman Stark, mayor, members of the council, yes, that would be much easier, only from an administrative standpoint, because of all of the state forms that we have to produce in order to comply with the, with the legal adoption process, as well as our legal advertising we are required to do throughout the course of this adoption process. It would definitely be easier for us to adopt it, and then the council make a commitment to find that money, you know, within short order. That would be easier.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. I was able to speak to some individuals in the philanthropic world, and they have heard, including from a leader of our community foundation, who's also heard from people in the business community. Our community is taking this very seriously and want to be part of the solution. The, they did indicate to me that if the city were able to make an additional contribution, they believe that both the business and philanthropic community would also step up. So, it is possible that we would have really strong supports from our community, and, and that, I think, is important in these budget times, and also, how cool if, if the whole community can do this together? So, one option, not completely fleshed out, it was a confirmation very recently, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, mayor. I, I'm not going to support the motion. It's not because I don't want to see it funded. I just think it's important that we stick with this budget, it's balanced, and to change our contingency fund could impact our bond trading. And I just think it's important that we continue this process and go forward. I will help however I can to look for more money in the community, whatever, but truthfully, I don't think you're going to be able to establish a whole new department that quickly, and so I don't think that much money is wanted. Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilwoman DeSithia.
Oh, thank you, mayor. I am not going to be supporting it, not for that reason, because I think it's a bad idea. And I'll be very direct. I think people know that about me. I think this is a clear attack on the police. I do. I just believe it that way, and I believe this is wrong for us to be heading in this direction here. The police have done an amazing job in our city. We are the model for the entire country, and to think that this is happening here in our city is disturbing to me. We have saw these police-involved shootings go from 44 in 2018 to 15 to 7 this year. Now, I believe that's an anomaly on both sides of it. I believe 7 is an anomaly, and I believe 44 was, but at the end of the day, our police department has done an amazing job, and I believe this is going to be a kick in the teeth for them to support this. I think it's just wrong for us to be doing this, and we're giving in to a small group of vocal individuals who are literally, and you can hear the chants, "Defund the police, their murders, their rapists, their everything." It's just so wrong what's going on right now, and so I will not be supporting it. And I appreciate the comment. Thank you, mayor.
Mayor.
Councilwoman.
For the record, what I am hearing is "Black Lives Matter," and what I am hearing as I sit here and watch, people circling around our building. That's what I hear, and so, it's just very interesting how I sit, I'm sitting here actually listening to it live, and how different it is at another space, so just want to put that on the record.
Thank you, councilwoman. We have robust interest from our community, so we will begin with public comments with Alyssa Peralta, followed by Viana Lopez.
Mayor, this is the clerk. I believe we do not have a second.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Peralta. I live in District 8. I wrote a letter, just to make it quick. I'm going to go ahead and read it. "As a Hispanic woman, I am truly disappointed you, Councilwoman Garcia. In the midst of the unfortunate passing of Officer Carnicle, you remain silent, but in light of society's current conflict involving police, only then do you see your platform to convey your distaste for police. I emailed Councilwoman Garcia a few months ago regarding the civilian oversight board. In summary, his assistant relayed to me that Councilwoman Garcia wasn't against police, just police brutality. His statement in his most recent post regarding police says otherwise. He applauded the work of janitors, nurses, grocers, but denounced both Phoenix police, and in short stated that Phoenix police contribute nothing to the Phoenix community in regards to safety. I would like to pose a question to you, Garcia. I live in one of your communities off of 28th Street in Roosevelt. It is decorated with trash, ridden with crime, drag racing, loud parties, and drugs. Did you respond to my 911 call, my drunk neighbors threatened and nearly physically assaulted my elderly grandparents' eye for asking to, for them to turn down their music? It was 4:00 in the morning. Did you respond to the drive-by shooting that occurred on my street just seconds after my grandfather came inside from watering his plants? Did you respond to the subsequent shootings after that? Did you respond when the, when the apartment complex on my street was charging the homeless population $25 a day to rent a shed for housing and buckets for toileting? They would dump their trash, heroin spoons, and feces-filled buckets on our street where children regularly ride their bikes. Phoenix police was present for all of it. Where were you? I've sent you numerous emails to bring this activity to your attention, and you've responded to one, and that was only to defend your position on police. So, shame on you for saying that they don't keep us safe and healthy. They were there in my greatest times of need. Where were you? Where were you when I feared for my life and my families? I am a brown body, as you refer to us as. Where were you? You use this platform for your own political agenda and to appease a small population of the Hispanic community, but denounce the remainder of us that don't share a similar mindset as you. Our community is not safe. You've done nothing to benefit and improve the impoverished areas under your care. By supporting the defunding of police, you will be doing, your community is a great disservice. Before supporting the defunding of police, I challenge all of you, especially Councilwoman Garcia, to spend time in the high-crime impoverished areas of the Phoenix community. Participate in a ride-along with Phoenix police. Attend a CPA, Citizens Police Academy meeting hosted at the Phoenix Police Academy in South Phoenix. Educate yourself on policing and experience it firsthand. I don't pretend that I could.
Thank you.
I don't pretend I could do your job, so don't try and pretend that you would know exactly what to do as a Phoenix police officer.
Thank you. Next, we will go to Kyle Gillespie, followed by Martha Winkler.
Mayor, we have unmuted Kyle at this time. Kyle, can you hear us?
Okay, I do not hear Kyle. We will go to Martha Winkler, followed by Marcia Florian.
Yes, hi. My name is Martha Winkler. I'm an extreme victim of Phoenix police, Jason Gillespie, Sunny Brook Substation, Desert Horizon precinct, professional standards, Mayor Kate Gallego, Phoenix City Council, which who have done everything in their power to cover up and silence me on my horrific assault by Jason Gillespie when I called the police for help at the Circle K at 7th Street and Bethany, Bethany Home five years ago. In dereliction of its duty, Jason Gillespie never even investigated why I called for help, and has repeatedly, had repeatedly colluded in a conspiracy that I had fell and cut my head and lost my balance. They never even intended to investigate him by professional standards, and only because I went to the media and found an attorney. This is why we need a civilian review board funded immediately and the Office of Accountability, because Phoenix police will collude and conspire in a conspiracy against a true victim. Within two minutes of Jason Gillespie talking to me, I was thrown to the concrete in a straight-arm bar throw takedown, a new grandmother just going to the store to buy lottery tickets, to my head with multiple violent throws and blows, and he horrifically beat me on my head. I had fractures to the front and the back of my skull, four days in the hospital and ICU, traumatic brain injury, brain hemorrhaging, acute cerebral hematoma, could have gone blind in my eye, lost 36% of my hearing, an extreme head, jaw, and mental injury. I actually never expected to survive. This is why we need this funded immediately. It was only because of the dollar, the dollar store incident last year, the Black Family incident, and the Good Samaritan video, like the George Floyd incident, that this all came out. Phoenix police would have colluded and conspired in a conspiracy, and the Minnesota police would have colluded in a conspiracy.
Thank you. We will next go to Simon Levinberg, followed by Vic Peir. We can.
Hi, longtime follower, first-time commenter. My name is Simon. I'm a research scientist here in the Valley, born and raised in Tempe, and I've lived in the Coronado District now for about five years, constituent of Carlos Garcia. Thank you for wearing that shirt today, councilman. I just want to state that I vehemently oppose the budget for Phoenix Police Department, the ranked third highest in the country in terms of police violence per capita, and I believe that increase in the police's budget is not the answer to the safe and healthy community. I hope that Mayor Gallego and the rest of city council will consider reallocation of funds towards community enrichment, community development, education, homeless services, and a slew of other things other than law enforcement here in the city. And I also implore Mayor Gallego to say Dion Johnson's name. Please release the name of the DPS officer who murdered him, and please release the incident report. Thank you.
Thank you. Vic will be followed by Ann Ender.
Hi, can everyone hear me? Yes, we can. Hi, my name is Vic Peir, and today I want to talk about how students who are disabled or are considered as having behavioral needs endure violence, suspension, and expulsion rates at far, rates that are far higher than their white or non-disabled peers. Black students with disabilities are six times more likely to have multiple suspensions, and four times more likely to be expelled, and native students with disabilities are suspended and expelled five times more frequently than their white, non-disabled peers. The punitive learning environments that students who are black, native, and Latinx are frequently subjected to are directly related to their chances for educational success, as well as their overall, overall well-being. These punitive learning environments often lead to these students being fast-tracked into the so-called prison-to-school, school-to-prison pipeline, and this happens precisely because of policing presence in their schools. It is absurd to me that the Phoenix Police Department, which is known as one of the deadliest police departments in the nation, and continually known for its continued collaboration with ICE, would have a contract with our schools. Time and time again, evidence-based research tells us that young people are most likely to survive and to thrive when they are in environments where they feel safe and where they are supported, and there is no way that having police present in our schools in the form of so-called student resources, officers, or otherwise, will ever be able to create an environment where disabled students, black and non-black students of color, indigenous students, and undocumented students are able to feel safe. This is an opportunity for the Phoenix City Council to clearly demonstrate a meaningful investment in all Phoenix students, especially those who are never safe when the Phoenix police are around. Yesterday, the Minneapolis Public School Board voted unanimously to terminate their contract with the Minneapolis Police Department for their so-called services of student resource officers. We need Phoenix to follow this example by divesting from the budget items related to policing and investing in the things that promote the safety and survival of our young people. In order to make sure Phoenix can thrive and beyond, the city needs to support the termination of the contract. Defund the Black Lives Matter.
Thank you. Ann has, Ann has already spoken, so we will go to Leah Vaidya, followed by Robert Doyle.
Hi.
We can, yes.
Okay, awesome. Hi, my name is Leah Vaidya, and as a member of this community, I just want to speak aloud about the things that are important to me, and clearly, very many. about the things that are important to me and clearly very many others, which in fact is not just a small vocal group, considering there is 1,700 comments opposing this and many, many people ready to speak on this call about this. So I would just like to thank you for the opportunity and thank everybody else who's spoken. And I want to make this brief, but I also want to uplift and reiterate what's already been said by many, many people on this call, in the comments and also outside. I'm urging you to oppose the proposed 944 million, 680,555, almost $1 billion allocated to our public safety department. Our community asks that you redirect these funds to programs that are aimed at healing and educating our community. Phoenix Police Department is ranked disgustingly high for police violence, and it's clear that diversifying and various training is just not enough. The people of Phoenix deserve more, better police alternatives and investments in actually helping the community through mental health, uh, housing and healthcare, et cetera. Uh, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next we will go to Robert, followed by Laisha Trejo Diaz.
Hello, can I be heard?
Yes, we can, and I'm sorry, uh, Laisha is not online. Alexandra Rodriguez will follow Robert. The floor is yours, Robert. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. First and foremost, I would like to take a moment of my time in silence to remember Arizona citizen Deion Johnson, who passed away last week from a gunshot fired by a DPS officer. Thank you. I'm speaking to you today on the subject of the 2020, 2021 annual budget for the city of Phoenix. I believe that this budget needs to be postponed, approved, revised and reviewed to be more properly suited to help fund and appropriate for issues and problems this state, country and world are facing in regards to social injustice and justice, police brutality and systemic racism. 2.5 million has been proposed by Councilman Garcia can easily be taken from golf course funds and allocated to the Office of Accountability and Transparency and Civil Civilian Review Board and/or the Civilian Review Board, possibly even more. We're in a very important time of change, a time in which all of you are in a position to help make an impact for the city, community and state. Do not let this opportunity slip from your grasp. Take action. Be the start of change that needs to happen, not tomorrow, not the next budget, but now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, we will next go to Alana Varner, followed by Mukhtar. Alana, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. As a resident of District Four, I am here to voice my opposition to the tentative budget. The Phoenix Police Department is one of the most legal police forces in the country. Police violence disproportionately impacts black, indigenous and people of color in this community. A study released in 2019 found racist and violent content on the social media accounts of 97 current and former Phoenix Police Officers. This year, we learned that the Phoenix Police points guns at people 10 times every day. I too am deeply concerned about people in my community being held at gunpoint. The Phoenix Police Department has demonstrated countless times that they are not here to serve and protect the residents of Phoenix. A decrease in police shootings is not sufficient. Nobody deserves to live in constant and justified fear of police violence. Now is the time to defund the Phoenix Police Department and invest those funds into civilian oversight, community healing, mental health, trauma services, education, after-school care, adequate housing, healthcare and employment opportunities. This is not the last that you will be hearing from me on this issue, and this is not the last that you will be hearing from the demonstrators that you left outside in triple-digit temperatures and refused to hear during this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mukhtar will be followed by Mary Hillis. Mukhtar, the floor is yours.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, uh, I want to thank, uh, Mayor Gallego for your leadership, and I want to thank uh, all the board members, uh, the council members, uh, for showing leadership in this crisis. And I want to especially thank our, uh, my district aide-councilman Carlos for always standing up for what's right, and we're always appreciated for helping your community. And just like many residents and citizens across the nation, I want change and I want sustainable change in the police department. Passing this budget as it is, it's going to be tone deaf in our city and we'll be laughing stocks. And so I would like to see the council members not to be overparted by the police and the police union and to start questioning the police department funding. As a city, we need to learn from Minneapolis incident and be proactive. We need to increase the Community Review Board funding and their and their first tax, and this is a very important part, the first tax should be looking into the last 15 years of police officer complaints and misconduct. As you know, the officer that killed George in Minneapolis had a lot of complaints and nobody ever looked at it. So as it today, as a city council members, as a city of Phoenix leaders, we have the opportunity to prevent future innocent by trying to look all the complaints. Let's do everything we can to change police culture. So the next police incident doesn't happen in Phoenix. It's time for real change. Please support police reform initiatives and let's make our city great. We could be our role model for the rest of the country. Let's make that change and let's not pass unchecked budget for city of funny police when we all know how the city community feel, especially black and brown people. So please be a great leader as you are and take actions and I appreciate.
Uh, thank you. Mary would be followed by Monique Kelson.
Hi, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Mary Hillis. I'm here today to oppose the proposed budget with a 44% distortion indicated for public safety. I ask you to move 25% of the public safety budget into programs that support the community. Every one of us knows an individual who struggles with mental illness or addiction disorder issues, and the 20% of individuals living below the poverty line in Phoenix far exceeds the national average. Especially in the midst of a, of the COVID pandemic, this council should prioritize the health, welfare, education and rehabilitation of this community. Doing so can alleviate the burden on police who are often forced to criminalize our city's most vulnerable populations. Please be an example for how this city can work to unite and heal its community by divesting funds into the areas that map with Phoenix ranking for cases of killing citizens for the $3 million of the public safety budget to support accountability through the Police Civilian Board of Accountability and Transparency. The community, the community, by the way, is still waiting for answers about the killing of Deion Johnson. Black Lives Matter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Monique will be followed by Ash. Monique, the floor is yours.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi. My name is Monique Kelson. I'm not only a native Venetian, but an Arizona State University Global Health student. I'm speaking on behalf of a tired and hurt community, and we are demanding reform. They are actually standing outside right now in 108 degree weather and an air quality index of 105. That is unhealthy for sensitive groups and being that we are in a global pandemic rooted by respiratory virus, this shows the insensitivity of our mayor. My friends and fellow protesters are here to demand Phoenix PD is defunded. The proposed budget as it stands is unacceptable and it's offensive that this is seriously being considered. Over $700 million to a police department that continues to break records for shootings and use of excessive forces ludicrous, especially in comparison to the mere $52 million that is proposed for community development and enrichment collectively. This budget is negligent. Last year, city manager Ed Zirker said in regard to the city budget, there would be, and I quote, "improved oversight over police operations, community relations and officer-involved shootings and concern for the announcement on the police budget." Why then is the budget up 25 million from last year? And why isn't Mr. Zirker asking other city departments to look into cutting their budget by upwards of 25%? Facts are facts and crime is not random. When people don't know where their next meal is coming from, they will resort to dramatic measures to fight this opportunity to support the community via reallocation of funds that focus on safety, support and prevention. I am not speaking a fairy tale. It is fact that despite year after year of increased funding, we are only better at clipping these officers to kill us. The city of Phoenix needs to do better. I am tired of us making the news with embarrassing headlines. Same day George Floyd was murdered, Phoenix PD unloads a clip into a sleeping man. We've hired our black police chief, a sad attempt to appease the black community. Under her, Phoenix continuously broke records for the most police-related civilian deaths. She's not in her job. Instead of investing in Chief Williams' killer staff, we are demanding more money in mental health and trauma services.
Thank you. Ash will be followed by Michael Blunt.
Hello, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
All right. Hello, Mayor and Council, my name is Ash Us. Um, I work a lot with our homeless community here in Phoenix. I'm, I'm, I'm here because I don't believe that you are listening. Right now, outside of City Hall, outside of City Chambers are hundreds of people who are chanting, who are angry, who do not feel safe in this city. We have a problem. We have a problem here. We've had a problem for a long time. This Phoenix Police Department needs to be strengthened. It needs to be changed. This, this isn't working anymore. There are lives, people who are being killed, and it's unjust. I'm asking you, look at the budget, look at all of the money that you are allocating towards murder, look at the money that is going into the pockets of people who are killing other people's children. Look deeply into all of the people who have died at the hands of Phoenix Police Officers. Listen to the voice of the mother of Deion Johnson, who had a peaceful vigil on Friday, wailed out in tears because her son is not coming home. Please listen, there are so many people outside right now, and some of y'all can't hear us because you won't let us in because of COVID. But I'm here with my friends of color, with people in this city. Please listen, please do not, do not just look past this. Hear us, hear the people who are suffering. We have a problem in our police department and it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael will be followed by Jake Friedman.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, my name is Michael Blunt, and as I am limited to a two-minute window, I will try to keep this short. In April of 2019, after the release of the OIS study of 2018, you, Mayor Kate Gallego, said that we had broad agreements in areas such as mental health. Our community members said we need to do better and we need additional resources beyond the police department to address mental health. We heard the same thing from our police officers, end quote. According to the Washington Post, the Phoenix Police Department ranked first in the nation in officer-involved shootings. According to the Phoenix Police Department's OIS dashboard, the Phoenix Police Department had 19 OIS shootings in 2018, and Phoenix leads the nation still. 133 total discharges in the last four years, discharges of a weapon also disproportionately skewed to white officers in, in the amount of 10 times. Despite being a city of roughly the same size, the Seattle PD has a cost of taxpayers of roughly $481 per capita versus the $628.29 per capita that the Phoenix PD costs taxpayers. I do not understand how a city can justify the funding of the police department to the level of 6.4 times higher than the general government and 2.7 times higher than the all of all other budgets combined. Of total appropriations, the police department constitutes more than a fifth of total funding. The city of Phoenix needs to, needs and deserves policing alternatives and investments in mental health and trauma services, education and after-school care, adequate housing, healthcare and employment opportunities. I would encourage the Phoenix City Council to reject the adoption of the tentative 2020 2021 annual budget ordinance S 46650, item number 44. I yield my time.
Thank you. Jake will be followed by Kevin F.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Gallego. Thank you, council members of the city of Phoenix. I know there are a lot of people outside. I know there are a lot of people presenting a lot of different perspectives today. And so in the brief time that I have, I'd just like to offer a little bit of a different approach to this. There has already been so much time invested in this budget that I know has worked and that has been spoken to the administrative side of this. I know that there's been so much work that have gone into these meetings, years and years, hundreds of people out there, us sitting here for six hours, presumably, hopefully sooner, uh, listening to these comments and listening to this. And I, I think the importance of this issue is very clear. I know that it would be difficult to amend this budget and go back, but I think that that is a necessary investment in being able to, um, not squander any of the valuable human resources that this city is so rich and full of. We need to find a solution to this. I think a moderate approach would be to maintain the Phoenix Police Department's budget from last year. They did not even use all of it. I think that that would be an incredibly valuable, important step towards rebuilding community trust. And if by funding the Office of Accountability, being able to produce more information, create more relationships between the city and the communities that serve. So I would urge you, I know there's, um, a lot of different perspectives on this, but to please take the time now so that we don't have to keep doing this, so that people out there don't have to keep doing this. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Kevin will be followed by Brianna Burrows.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I thank you, Council, for allowing me to present. I'm just going to go really quick. I think this is more of a numbers thing as I look at the expenditures by characters for years 2017. We spent around $500 million for the police department. When we go to 2018, we spent $600 million. The next year, we spent almost $700 million, and today the council is asking for close to $1 billion. So I want to make it clear for everybody, what are we really asking for? Are we going to get into, you know, Los Angeles, Chicago levels in five to 10 years? We're asking for, what, $3 billion? $5 billion? And I really feel that what the city of Phoenix and what its constituents really need are public transportation, uh, viable mechanisms for getting kids into the arts and education, which are right now prioritized as the lowest things on the current politicized, mortified sheets. So I don't really think anybody is asking for completely defunded police. We're just asking for things that matter in regulation, oversight and really education, which is right now we are the worst in. So just thinking about that, what, what do we really want in five to 10 years? $5 billion spent on the police force and still worse in education or, you know, making something more to them. That's all.
Thank you. Brianna will be followed by Joseph Mulkern.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, this is Brianna Burrows. Um, I'm a resident of District Four, a council member pastor's district. Um, I want to say thank you to Councilmember Pastor and thank you to Councilmember Garcia. We appreciate your support of getting that $3 million in funding out for the civilian review board and OAT. Um, I want to say, I know people have tried to ask that we, you know, at a later time decide to give this money to the civilian review board. It's unacceptable. The community is not going to accept that we wait another year to do this, that you don't give us a guarantee today or on the, and on the 17th that we will get the full funding. When you passed this initially in February 2020, you didn't give us a guarantee that we were going to get this $3 million. You didn't give us a guarantee that there would be a fair selection process for who's on the CRB. You didn't give us a guarantee that we would be a part of the voices to implement this CRB. So we're coming back to you now and we're telling you what is acceptable is full funding and it's full funding now. And if the business community and philanthropic community wants to be a part of this and is saying that they will, you know, come to the table to negotiate of getting a certain amount of money, they can go ahead and add money and resources to the $3 million that the city council already owes the civilian review board. So I want to say I'm 100% for that $3 million that we were owed. It was promised to us that we can actually have the appropriate resources to do this accountability work and for there to be transparency. Um, and also I stand with all of the protesters that are outside that you would not let in. Yes, they are in triple-digit temperatures because they care, they care about this community. Okay? And so I just want to say, you know, thanks once again to Councilmember Garcia, Councilmember Pastor. We're behind the people that want to get this $3 million in here. You know, Mayor Gallego, you voted for this CRB the first time, so you need to actually fund it now if that's what you promised initially. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph will be followed by Zoe Scott.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I am urging you to please reconsider the proposed $944,680,555 that are being allocated to our Public Safety Department for the 2020 to 2021 fiscal year. The Phoenix Police Department is statistically ranked one of the highest in the country for cases of police killing civilians. Police forces across the country have proven that diversifying and implementing various trainings have not and will not end police brutality. I volunteer with people experiencing homelessness. And during my time there, I have seen the Phoenix police using excessive force and terrorizing people without homes. It is horrifying and hurtful to see members of the Phoenix community having their human dignity ignored by a force that is meant to serve and protect us. I urge Phoenix City Council to defund the money being allocated to the police and put that money towards helping our community. The Phoenix Police Department is a department that has continued to abuse their power to hurt people of color and people experiencing homelessness. Justice for Dion Johnson, justice for George Floyd, Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoe will be followed by Anna Hernandez.
Hello, council members. I, Zoe Scott, go on record to ask that the council postpone the adoption of the proposed budget for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. I ask that you consider redirecting a portion of the funds from our Public Safety Department to increase the proposed budgets for community development and community enrichment. As humans, we have the innate desire to be seen, to be heard, to be validated. Right now, many are not having these needs met, including the protesters outside. The Phoenix Police Department is statistically ranked highest in the country for cases of police killing civilians. One could say funding the police for sensitivity trainings, diversification, de-escalation, and other proactive trainings could help decrease these cases. Unfortunately, police forces across the country, including Minneapolis, have implemented these programs, and it has not and will not end police brutality. Now is the time to shift our efforts to act in a manner unprecedented and look towards the future. Now is the time to fund programs for social workers to be first responders, to have educated professionals intervene in situations involving mental health, community distress, and times when understanding and empathy are of the greatest value. You may have seen in the New York Times article, "No More Money for Police," that Dallas has already begun dispatching social workers to some nine-on-one calls. This Dallas program has been successful, and many of the citizens received care that they would never have gotten in jails or in crowded hospitals. Dr. King once said, "A riot is the language of the unheard." I'm asking for you to hear me, to hear the voices of our community, to validate the unrest and injustice. I ask that you hear my request for peace and a future built on compassion. I urge you to reallocate a portion of the nearly $1 billion Public Safety Budget to budgets for community development and enrichment and towards Councilman Garcia's motion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anna Hernandez will be followed by Lorenzo Valdez.
I'm just checking, but city council, can you hear it? Can you hear us?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Here's Anna.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. So, today, I would like to comment that I'm adamantly opposed to the overgrowth funding for Phoenix PD. Phoenix PD does not solve all our issues that are in the community. Phoenix PD does not feeding people. Phoenix PD is not providing job assistance, homelessness. They're not providing education. That's what our communities need, and that's what we are here demanding. And while you guys are inside in the AC, we're out here sweating for our lives so that you guys stop letting our blood spill on these streets. Like, we should, you need to fund the civilian review board. It would be less than half of a percent, half of a percent of the $745 million that you're trying to allocate to the Phoenix PD. That's all we need to fund the civilian review board. Also, we would like to request that you divert 25% of those funds to community programs. We need healthy communities. We don't need more police. We need care, not cops. We're tired of you listening, Mayor Gallego, a year ago. We sat with you at the church, and you haven't listened to us for over a year. Enough is enough, and we're demanding action. Please stop being scared of the police unions. Please stop being scared of the politicians. Be scared of the people. That's who you need to be scared of, because we will come for your sake in November. Don't forget that. We're here demanding what we should have. We shouldn't even have to be out here demanding this. This is our right, and you guys keep perpetuating this money into the systematic oppression and racism that exists in the Phoenix PD. We're tired. We're tired of it. Give us what we should have as humans. That's all we're asking for, is equal rights. That's it.
And I believe Lorenzo may have Spanish interpretation, so we will use.
Can you hold up my dude? Okay. Tell me one. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Can you guys hear me? All right. Hey, my name is Jenny Gudman. I'm from Arkansas, Arizona, and I'm a citizen of the state. Hey, the county, Kate, we're looking at you. We need to defund the police now. You have young black and brown children who need help over 24 hours without food and water under no probable cause, because racist police and rioters wanted to target the most vulnerable communities. We're young, uneducated people, especially you against rioters. We have to take money away from the police, not from the arts, not from the schools, not from the roads, from the violent police attacking innocent people. We need the civilian review board. This is what happens when the most violent police department in the country goes and attacks hundreds of people that are here today risking their life in 111-degree weather while you guys are in the comfy AC. We demand that you defund the police today, not tomorrow. It should have been yesterday. Don't turn any form, an institution created to target black and brown communities, defund it.
Katie Beza, followed by Reyna Lopez.
Hello, city council members. And Kate, Mayor Gallego. My name is Sotefredes, and I'm an organizing director at 230 Center. Because in the no environment adjusted without racial and social justice, and the Peaceful Family stands united in making it clear that Black Lives Matter are being organized. Jessica Brits over the races by Phoenix PD Sunday night. Jess was a street medic providing services to protesters, and she can't make it out today because she's recovering from the traumatic arrest, the horrible experience by Phoenix PD and MCSO. And here is her statement that she wants to share because she can't be here with us today. There is no liberation if our black brothers and sisters are not liberated. There is no liberation if our people are met with street violence time after time. No one should ever be criminalized for protesting peacefully. But here we are, being police continuously meeting our movement with violence, attacking us with tear gas, pepper spray, rubber bullets, and more. Police and jails are dehumanizing our peoples, and they are made to break us, take our fight away and to control us. But we, the people, will not give up. The police do not protect us. We will fight us. City council, city council, protect us. We demand that you defund the police. We demand that you fund the CRB. We demand that you give monetary resources to our community. We demand that you rebuild our communities. We are resilient, black and brown indigenous people. We're trying to heal from centuries of white supremacy. But again, there is no liberation for our black brothers and sisters. Thank you for opening the space where Jess can be heard. She's not here because she's centering her mind and spirit, but she'll see you soon. It is our duty to fight for freedom. It is our duty to win. We must love one another, support each other, and we have nothing to do with that change. We demand to fund the police by 25%. Place a budget that prioritizes our people and ask police and ask for liberation.
Maria Castro, followed by Alexis Garcia.
Can you hear us? This is Lorenzo. She's on the list. A lot of the people left, so we're just, we're trying to get people out. So, this is Lorenzo who's gonna speak. And we need translation.
All right, Mario.
I can support a translation.
We want to use our official translation.
Buenas tardes. Good afternoon. Mi nombre es Lorenzo Valdez. My name is Lorenzo Valdez. And the reason why I'm here again. The reason why I'm here again. And I like to hear to ask for justice regarding the officers, about the officers and our families. Because three years ago, they took my son's life, Francisco Valdez. And that's left us lots of pain for both my family and my kids, his younger siblings. And I just want to ask for, please, for us to have justice regarding the police. They don't even know what damages they're causing us as a families, and so, we're just asking for justice with the police. Mayor, the interpreter's gonna ask the speaker if she can get closer to the telephone. It was unintelligible. And I just please ask for us to be released information and not to be divulging information to the public first. And I also ask for the collaboration between police and ICE for that to stop, and no more funding for the police. And I feel that they need to invest in us first. I don't think they need more money. And for all the violence against the families to stop. Yeah, that's all. Mayor? Mayor, may I say something?
Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah, so, I saw Lorenzo walking in, and I just want to say something to her. I also wanted to just talk a little bit about this case, because I think this is one of the situations that actually made me want to run for office, having worked with Lorenzo and her son Paco, who passed away at the hands of police. A couple of things happened that I think we can use stories like this to look at how we're shifting the way we police. Lorenzo herself called the police department because she was having issues. Her son was having mental health issues. Our officer showed up to her trailer, asked her to walk outside, and as soon as she walked outside, her son was shot six times in the back. We don't know what happened. The officers had video cameras, and they just happened to be off. Lorenzo was then taken to a dollar store nearby, to a parking lot, and held by our officers for six hours. In that time, it was, like she said in her testimony, the public found out her son had died before she did. Our officers eventually let her go in the parking lot, and she had to walk home and find her trailer ramsacked and the blood of her son on the floor. And then, she found out from others that her son was dead. We don't know what happened with the incident was, but there's things that we did wrong. We should be sending mental health experts alongside with the officers or before the officers. We should be taking care of the families when these incidents happen, both on-site, and then making sure we get them informations after. Nothing we can do is gonna bring Paco back, just like nothing we could do is gonna bring George Floyd back. But what we can do is prevent from these situations happening. Paco should be with us if we would have had different practices. And I think the civilian review board, the Office of Accountability and Transparency, is gonna allow us to study these situations and change our practices so that we no longer have to look at Lorenzo like I did right before the meeting and know that she's never gonna see her son and know that she's still outside fighting in these conditions and the weather that's out there. And so, again, thank you, Lorenzo, for testifying. And I really hope my colleagues can understand what Lorenzo went through, and we have an opportunity today to make sure that this doesn't happen again.
Thank you. Do we have Alexis Garcia or Marcia Florian?
Madam Mayor, members of the council? Are you, okay. I'm Marcia Florian. I'm a native of Phoenix and a 27-year veteran of the Phoenix Police Department. The chaotic, violent, and destructive events of downtown Phoenix have demonstrated just how important a professional, well-trained, and equipped police department is. For the last six nights, every officer in the police department has been mobile, working 12 hours on, 12 hours off, seven days a week. They're wearing upwards of 40 pounds of equipment in 110 degrees and up, and the officers have been spit on, pelted with rocks, water bottles, fireworks, and more. Some officers have collapsed from heat exhaustion and required intravenous fluids. Our officers have held the line, been professional, and kept our city safer than most large cities in the nation. In my 27 years of policing, I have never seen an event that has taxed every city resource more than the last three months of the COVID virus and the ongoing protests. As you know, every penny counts. The police department is already understaffed woefully, and a budget reduction may very possibly bring it to a knees. I believe some council members would like that, but I am certain that every member of the city, most members of the city of Phoenix would be livid. The mayor commended Neighborhood Services and Public Works this week for their great work in cleaning up the mayhem in the city. work in cleaning up the mayhem in the city this week. However, no mention was made of the efforts of the men and women of the Phoenix Police Department who have toiled each day and well into the night to facilitate our citizens' right to protest while keeping the peace. So let me take a moment to commend Chief Jerry Williams and the members of the Phoenix Police Department for their stellar and heroic performance over the last six days. I fully support the Phoenix Police budget as submitted, and I do not want you to sacrifice my public safety or the city's public safety of the masses to appease the desires of few. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Alexis Gar- back to Alexis Garcia, followed by Hannah Howell.
Yes. My name is DeNajah French. I'm here speaking on behalf of Alexis Delgado Garcia. These are the words of Delgado love for you guys to hear. My name is Alexis Delgado Garcia. I am the community organizer of Ucho. I am here in solidarity to ensure that our money, the people's money, isn't being taken away from our people. I'm here because I am the son of two undocumented, undocumented parents, and every day I have to experience and see the fear and trauma in their faces every time I see a police. I'm here because I'm with a high school that has three to five security guards and two officers at the front of the school every time I walk in. I'm here because I am tired of our communities being targeted by a color of skin. This police force is the same police force that pushed for SB 1070, a law that may reach a profile in legal. This police force is the same police force that forced my family out of these states and separated my family. This police force is the same police force, is the same one that is tear gassing my friends when they are protesting. This police force is the same police force that's incarcerating black and brown bodies in our streets. This police force is the same police force who murdered Deion Johnson and Antonio Arce. This budget needs to ensure that our community is being prioritized. This budget needs to ensure that our collaboration between ICE and PPD is being brought to an end. This budget needs to ensure that there is no more funding to the department that's killing our people. This budget must be our first, our people's first. This budget needs to ensure that we are investing in more public education, more in Head Start programs, and more funding in civilian oversight programs to hold these tasks accountable. And lastly, the council needs to tell us that they're processing to fundraise over $3 million for the Undocumented Relief Fund. Thank you.
Sophia Hutchinson, followed by Talania Flores.
Okay. Does someone now?
My name is Denise Cazares, and I'm speaking about, um, it's common sense why the, why we're fighting to defund the police. You fund the police to about $750 million, but you fund housing, public transport, available services, community enrichment, and some, uh, inter- rental programs, emergency management, and many more. And if they weren't as important, wouldn't the cars, uniforms, and weapons value more than our society, our safety, and our community? You fund the police more and more, which makes no sense at all to me, because the debt toll of our colored community is rising, and these debts are at the handle of the people you are funding. These debts are not being honored, they're being forgotten by the city and put under the rug. We know you're trying to take the money for the civilian oversight reward from other funds that makes us raise it ourselves. Your, the blood of these people's hands are on yours, not just from the police. We need to take money directly from the police and put more funding into our community that make us feel safe.
And we have three more, y'all.
Can you hear us? Uh, yes, we can.
Hello? Hello, my name is Sonia. I am part of Transport Pueblo, and I also live on, um, District 5. And I'm part of the LGBTQ+ migrant community of color, and this also affects our community as well. I live in District 5. I vote in District 5, and my council member is Teddy Guadalupe. I'm asking you to take action, relocate 25% of the Phoenix Department annual budget, and instead invest in community development and enrichment, as well as publicly announce police and ICE collaboration. Nationwide and here in Phoenix, we are seeing how police do not protect the people, but rather protect property, being the physically the deadliest police force in the United States, and no amount of training or diversity makeup can cover up the fact that our communities are in danger every time they come in contact with police. Our communities deserve and need alternatives to policing and an end to threats of detention and deportation. I call on you to take action, relocate 25% of the Phoenix Police Department annual budget, and announce police and ICE collaboration. Thank you.
Just right now.
Can you hear us? Yes, we can.
Hello, my name is Michael Woinahan, also known as Renaissance. I am one of the organizers with Mass Liberation Arizona, and we work in coalition and in partnership with black and brown organizations and communities throughout the valley. And we're here to say, stop criminalizing our people, stop the sundowntown that has been created that criminalizes our people, stop sending a brutal police force and a military out to meet us when we are protesting brutal police forces. It makes absolutely no sense that last week we were fighting to make sure that the Civilian Review Board was not defunded because the city didn't have enough money to fund the actual things that we need to solve the problems that our communities are facing, and this week you are considering increasing the police budget. I'm having a hard time even saying it. It doesn't make any sense to me. This money needs to go back into the communities, into the social safety net, into our schools, into health programs, to address the emotional health and wellbeing that we need and the economic security that we demand in order to take care of our families. It is all of us or none of us, and either you're with us or you're against us. We are the people, and this is a practice of love and rigor. Be with us, be through it, with us in this hard time, right? Because this is not a moment, it's a movement!
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, my name is Shanice Searolyn. I am a current resident here in Phoenix. I am a black American living in Phoenix, um, and I am standing here in support with all of my allies and other races who are standing up to help us rea- raise our voice and say that my life does matter along with my other black and brown brothers and sisters. And for us to be here today, to be having to, to have to protest the fact that we are increasing the police budget instead of putting this money into our community and to the children and to these people that you are, you are elected to protect and serve. You're not even listening to what the people are saying. There is no way it should take 600 people being out here for, in 110 degrees, for our people to hear that we matter, we just matter. That is all we are trying to say. That's it. All 50 states are literally rallying together to just say that it is not okay to kill black people. No, no, we understand that it's not okay to loot and destruct, but the fact that you can sit here and talk about looting, you are not talking about Black Lives. If you can talk, if, we've heard more about the destruction of property than we have heard about the injustices of black people, the injustices of black people that have been going on long before George Floyd. We had Trayvon Martin, we had Eric Garner, we had, we had, we had Emmett Till, and we literally, all the way back. We can go back 400 years. I don't have time to list the names because you should do your research. You know what I'm saying? So, as we continue, I want you to understand that if you want this to stop, stand up. Your silence basically says, we're saying it's not okay to kill us. Your silence says, but we don't care. But we don't care, because no matter, I don't care how many criminal records somebody has, no criminal record justifies death. That's why they have the death penalty. That's why they have it. And at the same time, my tax dollars go to literally sit around and be nervous of getting pulled over by the people that I am paying with my tax dollars, okay? I will not, I will not. And this is not a moment, this is not a moment. I will never, ever get tired for fighting for my black and brown babies, okay? I will never, ever, ever get tired of this. So if you're not going to listen-
Thank you.
We're going to make sure you listen, and we, we're going to keep peacefully protesting and keep showing you that this is, that the bottom [bleep] is not, that you're trying to make us be in the media, it's not who we are.
Thank you.
We're going to keep being, y'all.
Thank you. Uh, I believe next is Murphy Bannerman, followed by LaShay Brown.
Hi, this is Murphy. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, I am a Phoenix resident of District 6, and I want to first thank, uh, Member Garcia for motioning for an increase of 2.5 million for a total of 3 million to the Civilian Review Board and Office of Accountability and Transparency. We will not accept anything less than full funding. I demand each member of this council to vote in favor of the 2.5 million increase. We should not wait for someone to be killed to act. We need a fully funded CRB and OAT to investigate all reports of police misconduct. Without the 3 million, these committees have no teeth. We will not accept empty promises to find funding. The funding should come directly from the Phoenix PD, just as it, as they have taken from our communities. I stand with the protesters outside, rightfully calling for justice, and hold the city and Phoenix PD accountable. Our lives, Black lives, matter. Thank you.
Thank you. LaShay will be followed by Sean Severud.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is LaShay Brown, and I am a member of the Black Phoenix Organizing Collective. Deion Johnson, Michelle Cusso, Dylan Papa, Mohammed Ado Mahamen, Willie Neil Harden, Timothy Odal Leon, JR Williams, Valentine McBeckbu, Romaine Brisbane, Chaka Pumama Pan McBeckbu, Thomas Atkins, Michael Austin, Jacob Michael Harris, Lynn Tendell, Andre Lavance Rippey, Joni Block. These are the names of the black people killed by the Phoenix Police Department since 2013. We continue to grieve them, and I honor them in this space. The city of, of Phoenix has the opportunity to stand with the community members to lead with stark accountability and transparency. Increasing the Phoenix Police budget will do the exact opposite. I am demanding a 25% decrease in the budget for the Phoenix Police Department. I believe the million-dollar increase that, in the department's proposal, should go to serving funding programs like Head Starts across the city, after-school programs, and extensively better, better funding the Undocumented Relief Fund. It is vital that city council looks towards efforts that will enhance and support the health and safety of our communities instead of efforts that are designed to oppress and destroy them. The city of Phoenix should not pay for collaboration between the police department and ICE. We demand this collaboration, and this council should not support it. The city of Phoenix should not pay to increase the pay of the, one of the most lethal police departments in this nation, and the city should not support it. The citizens of Phoenix should not pay to increase the budget of a department that stands opposition to transparency and accountability, and the city should not support it. I stand in full opposition to this budget proposal, and I demand that the city council stand with me. You do not build community by funding those who are mobilized against it. You do not stand in solidarity with the black citizens, indigenous citizens, brown citizens, LGBTQ citizens, and our city citizens with disabilities and our families if you reward those who are continuously responsible for our bloodshed. You are not for community if you do not oppose the proposed budget. Thank you.
Sean will be followed by Rowdy Thering.
Mayor Gallego and members of council, um, I've lived in the Garfield neighborhood for about six or seven years now, and I'll, I'll just say, I've never seen anything in that neighborhood like I did Sunday night. Police, the Phoenix PD, pushed protesters into the neighborhood with incredibly violent and aggressive tactics. Um, they arrested bystanders who were on their own property, reporting violently, aggressively. Um, this has happened multiple times, so I, I'm sure, you know, multiple lawsuits will come out of this. So, again, it, it's just the mentality of the Phoenix Police, and I, I think everybody is really tired of it, particularly, again, Garfield is, is a predominantly and historically brown and black community. Um, so, you know, these things don't happen by accident. And by the way, there are still cartridges all over. It looks like a, it looks like an absolute war zone. They don't even clean everything up after they destroy the neighborhood. Um, so, this is really sickening. You know, I was at the protest last night, um, with a few other people on skateboards trying to block off roads for the, for the protest, and, and a cop in his, in his cruiser pulls up to a few of us and, and starts yelling at us, saying, "You guys are the problem, not us, you guys." This is their mentality, okay? This is the problem. And again, this predominantly affects the black and brown communities, and I just want to say right now, I really appreciate the black and brown leaders who've really stood up, um, and led this community, because, you know, the peace that's come in this community is not from the police. The police leadership has been absent, Ed Zerkers leadership has been absent, Mayor Gallego, I, I really hope that you stand up for what's right here, uh, because the police don't need any more funds, all right? So I would ask you to vote against this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Rowdy Thering, followed by Vidi Hernandez.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hello. I'm a citizen from the outskirts of Phoenix calling in today to ask that Phoenix greatly defunds their police force for the 2020-2021 proposed budget. I strongly oppose the proposed budget of nearly $945 million to Phoenix Public Safety. Public safety alone took up 34.3% of the total 2019-2020 budget, while community development took up only 8.1%. Community enrichment took up 9.7%, and environmental services took up 15.7%. I would also like to add that Phoenix Police are responsible for 11% of police killings from January 2013 through December 2019, with Mesa 8.1% and Tucson at 7.7%. All three cities being higher than both NYPD and LAPD, according to mappingpoliceviolence.org. Phoenix Police, as well as police departments all across the nation, should not be using tear gas as a way to disperse crowds. I believe it is inhumane and vile. Tear gas is a chemical weapon that was banned from use in warfare in 1925 by the Geneva Protocol, and it should be banned from use by law enforcement. According to a study published by the University of California, San Francisco, the most severe injuries from tear gas occur in use by law enforcement and the intentional incapacitation of people. Phoenix PD believes they are protecting and serving when they fire upon unarmed protesters with tear gas and rubber bullets, when in fact they are doing the exact opposite. Phoenix Police have shown time and time again that they do not care about black people and other people of color. If the city of Phoenix had even an ounce of respect for their citizens, they would listen to the countless voices that are shouting "Black Lives Matter" and "Defund the Police." These funds would be better spent in the community development and enrichment. You are funding murderers, you are funding criminals. I demand justice for Deion Johnson and others who have lost their lives to Phoenix Police. Defund the police, Black Lives Matter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Vidi Hernandez.
This is Vidi Deion Hernandez, with, with an option. We are here to demand the defunding of police departments. It is ridiculous, it is angering that there was even be a consideration that this money needs to come from the community or that the community needs to privately fundraise. That is an insult to the pain, to the grief of the community. This money needs to come from the police department? That's the only place it can come from. So we want you all to, we want to hear what you have to say to the community. Over 2,500 people that made a comment online that you have not even acknowledged, to the over 600 people that are outside risking their lives in 109-degree weather. We want to know, Mayor Gallego, what are going to be your actions? No more, "What are your words?" or "You're listening." We want to know, what is your action? We want to know from every other council member, what is your action? We want to know where you stand, and we want to hear you say that you're going to re- We want to know where you stand, and we want to hear you say that you're going to reinvest and move money from the Police Department to fully fund civilian oversight and to fully fund the things that actually make us safe, that actually make us healthy. That is the budget that we demand, that is the budget that we need. And with the national outcry and the city in outcry, this is the moment to act. We are going to be here, if you are not funding, we're asking and we're telling every single council member, we expect you to not take a vote on a budget that is 25% more, that is 25 million more than last year. We ask you all to stop funding this department, and we will be here June 17th to see how you vote. And we'll be here to see what you do. We're going to come in and see your action on June 17th, but today we want to hear, where are you at? What are you going to do? Are you going to act? So tell us that. Defund police?
Thank you. Gabby Garcia followed by Marcus Reed.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. My name is Gabby Garcia. I'm a resident of the Woodlawn Park neighborhood. I've been in central Phoenix for about three years now, and I just wanted to come on here and just state that I think that the city of Phoenix should strongly reconsider the proposed budget for the allocated funding for the 2020-2021 year. The Police Department is statistically ranked one of the highest in the country for cases of police killing civilians. The police forces across the country have proven that diversifying and implementing various trainings have not and will not end police brutality. The city of Phoenix needs and deserves policing alternatives and investments in mental health and trauma services, education, and after-school care, adequate housing, healthcare, and employment opportunities. I strongly suggest that you reconsider reallocating that funding for the following year and really work towards putting those policies, putting those into new policies and programs that will create and sustain a safe community. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcus Reed, we tried Marcus earlier, and we are hoping for better luck now.
Hello, can you hear me this time?
We can hear you this time.
Over, hi, okay. So I'm just going to add my story to everything today. So I was born into a family that was likely one missed hour of work away from being homeless. So there's no question, we go to work, we work hard. In fact, any thought of changing careers was off the table because it could distress the family element. I was born in this country, but I'm here to ask if I can be an American. I moved to Phoenix to finally get an education and pursue my dream to become a doctor. Two nights ago, I was downtown coming home from work and made a turn down a street. I was relieved because it was full of our protectors as citizens, the police. Some guy near me said, "Police need more than six months of training." So many of the police returned to small cuts amongst their groups just angered a few of them. I let the guy cross the street in front of me to allow him to voice his complaints to the police unabridged to my presence. When I crossed the street behind him, the police locked eyes with me and racked their shotguns as to intimidate me. I have over a 4.0 grade point average, I have poured in multiple hours of volunteering in hospitals in the community. My grandfather told me a story about how he frequently had to run home from work at night. He had to hide from the local police under the direction of the KKK in Texas after working on the railroad all day. I found myself reliving this moment after Ducey's order the other night. Although I was not in a big group of people, although I was walking home from a hard day of work, I knew my livelihood and future was at stake if I were subject to their arrest, hurt, asked questions later behavior that is being displayed in this city. So I ran and hid in the same place, different city, that my grandfather hid in. I did nothing wrong. Why is the police force chasing me? Why are they threatening my life with their weapons? So I'm here to ask, so can I be an American? This review board is only a small step in the right direction. Should I have at least one right, left on American soil, freedom of petition, I would argue that the CRB is a small price to pay for the rights that are supposed to be afforded to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Madison Stratford followed by Aiden Polito. Yes, we can.
Okay, great. My name's Madison. I'm a constituent in 85021 and native Phoenician. I am an ASU educator and white woman who has been the victim of overly aggressive police and tactics, tactics that left me with PTSD. I cannot imagine how my situation would have ended had I been a person of color. I am strongly opposed to the 900-plus million budget for the Public Safety Department and suggest we redirect a portion of those funds to Community Development and Enrichment, as well as the Civilian Review Board. I currently live off 19th Avenue in Northern and see the firsthand effects of mental illness, poverty, drug addiction, and I do not believe that our resources are best spent on the police. I think we need more funding for resources that directly assist the most vulnerable and not resources that criminalize them. We have enough police, we need more funding for education and community outreach. I am in strong opposition to the proposed 900-plus million for the Public Safety Department for the 2020-2021 fiscal year, and would like to see a portion of these funds reallocated to Community Development and Enrichment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Aiden followed by Eric Youngdoll.
Hello, hello, hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and council members, to allow my voice and everyone outside to be heard. I hope you can agree, we need to move humanity forward within our community to see the world progress. I ask you redirect funds from Phoenix Police to programs that will actually heal, educate, and nourish our community. The city of Phoenix is statistically ranked highest in the county for cases of police killing civilians. The people of Phoenix deserve well-funded alternatives and investments in mental health, trauma services, education, after-school programs, adequate and affordable housing, healthcare, employment opportunities, as well as sustainability and environmental programs, and also the board that helped with transparency and everything else. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Eric will be followed by David Portugal. Eric? Do we have Eric with us? Okay, David Portugal followed by Oscar Ventina.
Can you hear me? This is David.
Yes, we can.
Yes, my name is David Portugal. I am a professional in the mental and behavioral health field, and I just wanted to kind of simplify a lot of what's been said today. At the end of the day, what we're talking about is either funding a reactive solution like the police or a proactive solution like mental health, education, nutritional services, substance abuse recovery programs. At the end of the day, the council is making a decision on how they view the public. Do they see us as being pass-saving, that we can only benefit from reactive services? Or are we worth the investment of proactive services? Excuse me. So at the end of the day, I want you to understand that that's what we're talking about here. In mental and behavioral health, we understand there's a difference between treating symptoms and root causes, and the police are only treating symptoms, and social programs treat the root causes. So I understand a council member earlier expressed that they have concerns about crime, specifically in District 8, and I thank you for your concern, but we have multiple ways to address crime. And just know that your budgeting lets us know how you see us and how you value us as human beings. That is all.
Thank you for your testimony. Oscar will be followed by AJ Torres.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'd like to first start by saying, Black Lives Matter. Deion Johnson's life mattered and matters still, and he and his loved ones deserve justice. I'd like to agree with everyone who's calling for the, under the defunding of the nearly 944, 945 million dollars allocated to public safety, especially all that money dedicated to law enforcement. As we've seen recently, law enforcement has served to escalate and to abuse people who are practicing their constitutional rights of assembly and to gather and to call for justice after generations of oppression, generations of dehumanizing, and after months of suffering at the hands of a pandemic, which has disproportionately harmed working-class Black and Brown people nationwide, but also in the city of Phoenix. To anybody who can't ima, who says, "Oh, we can't imagine what a world without law enforcement, without police officers look like," I challenge and say, "Of course you can. If your experience is one of a suburban upbringing, a suburban existence, you don't live with the reality of police patrolling your streets, of police as an unwelcome and antagonistic presence. You don't know what it's like to confront, to encounter police, law enforcement, and know afterwards that whether or not you walked away with your life had very little to do with your behavior, and to live with that kind of reality day in and day out, and that game of roulette." And to the council and the mayor and everyone within earshot of what I'm saying, I would implore you to think about what you can be doing beyond your elected roles, beyond what you're, beyond the sort of limitations, let's say, of the protocol that you adhere to. I'll remind you that during, in the midst of this pandemic, we've seen local law enforcement and town members, council members across the state who defy the order, and so you have to make a choice. Who are you going to stand with, and what are you going to fight for?
Thank you. AJ Torres followed by Fabio Santana.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you, guys, for your time. I know you, guys, can hear us out here. We've been out here since noon. We're chanting, we are standing here because we want you, guys, to reconsider the proposed budget of almost $700 million for public safety, which I say loosely because we don't feel safe. It is a privilege to feel safe in the presence of a police officer. Our community asks that you redirect funds to programs that heal and educate us, increase the proposed budgets of 24 million for community development and community enrichment. There is so much more that we can be doing. The Phoenix Police Department is statistically ranked one of the highest in the country for cases of police killing civilians. Police forces across the country have proven that diversifying, implementing various trainings have not and will not end police brutality. The city of Phoenix needs and deserves policing alternatives and investments in mental health, trauma services, education, after-school care, adequate housing, healthcare, and employment opportunities. We are asking you to defund the Police Department and allocate 2021 city funds to police programs, to policies and programs that will create and sustain a safe community for us. Studies show that communities with resources do not need policing. Black Lives Matter, justice for Deion Johnson. Thank you.
Fabio will be followed by Erica Weis.
Fabio, can you please take yourself off of mute? You're unmuted on our end.
All right, I cannot hear Fabio, so we will go to Erica, followed by Pemprit Gill.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you very much for giving us some time tonight. I am in Councilwoman Pastor's district and actually live not too far from where the peaceful protests of Saturday rallied and marched. And one thing I've noticed, living in this neighborhood and seeing many protests, is the very stark difference in how the armed anti-lockdown protesters were treated not too many weeks ago, with police in their normal uniforms, wearing just normal masks, and people marching in defense of their lives and peacefully marching, being met with police and riot gear. This is unacceptable. We're actually a law enforcement household, and this is unequal application of the law. Therefore, I ask that the police budget be decreased and 25% be moved into increasing social services, improving policies and procedures, so that we do not have situations like George Floyd, Deion Johnson, happen in our cities. I've seen how the police chased people that were using the right to assemble and treated them when they were just trying to get home, and this is unacceptable. It should be unacceptable to anyone who believes in the First Amendment. So I would like to see changes made and improvements made in training, policy, procedures, demilitarize the police, and just remember, they, public safety is for everyone. Black lives deserve public safety, Brown lives deserve public safety, and everyone deserves public safety. Some of us have it by virtue of what we look like, and some of us don't. Thank you very much, and Black Lives Matter.
Thank you. Pemprit followed by Virginia Miller.
Hi, this is Pemprit. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, so I'm Pemprit Gill. I live in South Phoenix. I'm a member of the city community. First, and first thing I would like to do is acknowledge all the activists that are out there right now protesting what has gone on. They need our love because they're fighting for the truth, and we need to let them know that. I know you ask for your energy, and the youth is coming. The youth is coming for that change. So the first thing, first thing is, I would like to, you all, to reconsider the proposed funding for the police for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. I don't think even giving more money to the police will fix this systematic problem we currently have. Phoenix PD, again, as everyone else has mentioned, is consistently ranked high in police violence towards civilians. The alternative should not be to keep funding their training programs, the harder oversight. Instead, we need to figure out a way to dramatically shrink their functionality and look for better means to help keep our community safe. I deem that we start to fund and develop no police solutions to the problems that our city faces, especially for the people in the community that are undocumented, are in lower-income brackets. I demand you take the proposed public safety funding and allocate 25% or more to invest in our housing, employment, and healthcare, and the ways to target our true problems of public safety. Instead of you, guys, criminalizing homelessness, we need to publicly finance supportive housing. Instead of gang units, we need to fund, we need funding for community-based anti-violence programs, trauma services, and especially given the youth opportunities for jobs. Finally, instead of the police inside of our schools, I demand funding for more school counselors, better after-school programs, and restorative, justive programs. And honestly, there's also things that you, guys, need to keep your previous promises and pair teachers, the race that they deserve, and get them better education on how to teach students that are undocumented and from lower-income brackets. In the end, defend, in the end, defund the Phoenix PD and instead allocate 2020 and 2021 public safety policies and programs that will create and sustain a safe community. Thank you, guys, for listening, and listen to the youth.
Virginia will be followed by Josh Bacopolis.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Many in our community are rightfully angry, and the city of Phoenix must allocate $3 million to fund the Phoenix Civilian Review Board. Our communities must have justice for excessive use of force by the Phoenix PD. There must be transparency within and amongst those that willingly take an oath to serve and protect the people of this vibrant city. Peace is possible. Stop militarizing the police. Stop profiling Black and Brown people, and find it in your hearts, Councilwoman Sotia, that not all people who want to defund the police hate them. We hate police brutality. We hate the racist practices that are perpetuated by the most deadly police department in America when you scale for size. So please, defund the city of Phoenix Police Department and reallocate those funds to community services that actually help the people. defund the City of Phoenix Police Department and reallocate those funds to community services that actually help the people that you are serving to protect. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh will be followed by Cherry Lynn Wally.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, thank you. I am opposed to the additional funding for the Phoenix PD. The Phoenix PD is ranked one of the highest in the country for cases of police killings of civilians. The PD is already thoroughly militarized and shows little to no humanity towards the people that they are supposed to protect and serve. History will absolve the masses of protesters, including those outside City Hall right now. History will condemn those who stand against the people. It is appalling you can't seem to find the money for two-point-five million for civilian oversight, but yet more than enough for a twenty-five million increase to the police budget. This is a crime. It is below shameful. Defund the police and move money into social programs, which will create and promote safe and healthy communities. I also demand to end the collaboration between Phoenix PD and ICE. Justice for Deion Johnson, justice for George Floyd, Black Lives Matter. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Cherry Lynn will be followed by Jules Hogan.
I am a longtime homeowner in District One, a sixth-generation Arizonan, a third-generation civil servant, and a Sunday School teacher. Not long ago, a few years ago, I realized I needed to practice what I was preaching, and I attended my first political protest. While peacefully protesting, I was gassed and pepper-balled by the Phoenix Police Department. This is just the tip of the iceberg when it comes to Phoenix police use force. As a tax-paying Phoenix resident and a concerned citizen, I offer the following comments on the city budget, specifically relating to funding of the police department. I strongly request that you, council, defund the police by twenty-five percent, and take that money and put it toward programs that create a safer and healthier community. I ask that you fully fund the Office of Accountability and Transparency at the full two-point-nine million dollars, and that you come through on the promise to fund the Community Review Board at three million dollars. I ask that you hold individual officers and leadership accountable. I ask that you stop allocating money to the police department's collaboration with ICE. This policy of cooperation damages our community. Finally, I want to know, what do I tell my Sunday School kids when they ask me if they are supposed to trust the police? When they ask me why the police kill black and brown people? And finally, when they ask me, why are people scared? Thank you.
Thank you. Jules will be followed by Jessica Madsen.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. So my name is Jules. I'm a student and a teacher at Arizona State University. I wanted to thank the council members and the mayor for listening to the public speak. I oppose the budget provided for fiscal year twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one due to the increase in funding for the Phoenix Police Department. Between twenty thirteen and twenty nineteen, the Phoenix police were involved in over six hundred shootings, and they killed three hundred and fifty-three people. Of these deaths, twenty-four percent of the victims were black, though the black community only accounts for seven percent of Phoenix residents. I believe that the budget should be reformed to totally fund the civilian oversight of the police with the two-point-five million dollars needed. Further, that instead of taking this money from our contingency fund, we should remove this from the public safety budget, which is being increased to nearly a billion dollars. In twenty nineteen, dozens of community members similarly called the council to disapprove of a similar budget raise for the police department, and yet, despite the community outrage, it was still approved. Similarly, in two thousand and nineteen as well, there was a, the death of a black person right before the budget was to be approved. This is not a new thing, and this is not something that we're going to all of a sudden stop caring about. The Phoenix Police Department is incredibly violent and dangerous toward the community. Black Lives Matter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jessica will be followed by Ahmad Labadidi. Excuse me for that. Jessica, floor is yours. Jessica, can you hear me?
Mayor, she's no longer on the line.
Thank you. We will then go to Ahmad, followed by Robert Nichols.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Ahmad, and I just wanted to say
Mayor, Ahmad's call was dropped. It seems like he got disconnected.
Okay, then we will go to Robert Nichols, followed by Nicole Welch.
I think it's like baseball and like basketball were going on at the same time.
Robert, we can hear you.
It'll be like every sport has their season, and like, maybe the playoffs will be like, just as
Robert? Robert?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Events of the past week have called into question the country's commitment to police accountability, but today, these city council members have an opportunity to lead the way in reforming America's police forces while saving Phoenix taxpayers' money. Given the recent sweeping rhetoric and promises to protect constituents in the face of an unprecedented pandemic, you'd expect to find that this body plans to commit at least as much money to the coronavirus relief as it does the police. To be mistaken, not including federal grants, the members of this council and the mayor propose to spend five-hundred-ninety-one million nine-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars on the police. That's more than two-hundred-and-fifty-seven times the mere two-million-three-hundred-thousand dollars that the council proposed to spend on our city's coronavirus relief fund. This budget is unacceptable. I urge the members of this council to reject the budget proposal in favor of a proposal that would more accurately reflect the crisis facing our city, state, and nation. We cannot afford to give the police more than half a billion dollars. That's a full ten percent of the city's total budget for a single department, while facing both economic and medical crises. In the interest of police demilitarization and community relations improvement, I urge the council members to reduce political, or police budgets and place limitations on the amount and types of federal grants available to Phoenix PD. We do not need soldiers patrolling our streets. I further urge this council to fully empower the Office of Accountability and Transparency, as voted upon by this council in February, to perform full and uninhibited investigations of police misconduct. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole will be next, followed by Cecilia. Nicole Welch, the floor is yours.
Mayor, Nicole is no longer on the line.
Thank you. Do we have Cecilia? Who would be followed by Chris Martinez, Christopher Martinez?
Hi, thank you, council members. I hope you can hear me. For almost all of these calls, Mayor Gallego, we have callers calling in and asking, can you hear us? And you have said you could, and I hope you are hearing us. I am strongly opposed to the proposed budget and that you distribute these funds to the civilian oversight department. The Phoenix Police Department refuses to take accountability for their actions, and Councilman Sal DiCiccio agrees. Can we ask about where is the transparency for Deion Johnson's murder by your own Department of Safety? Ask yourselves, why are you proposing increased funds for a department that brutalizes people, strikes fear into black and brown communities? Why are you continuing to decrease funds for mental health, affordable housing, healthcare, sustainability, and our own education system? There will be no peace until there is justice served. I yield my time.
Thank you. Christopher Martinez, followed by Zulima Payan.
Hello, my name is Christopher Martinez. I'm a fifty, fifty-two-year-old native of Phoenix. I'm a child of natives, a grandchild of natives, a great-great-grandchild of natives, and beyond. And one of the reasons I'm pointing that out is like, I talked to my mother, who's eighty-three years old. Her name's Connie Mesa, and we talked about the changes that have happened in Phoenix over the years, and it's grown astronomically. Different diverse people have moved in from different parts of the world, and all different things, different things that we've seen that have changed. But one thing that has remained constant is that the Phoenix Police Department has consistently remained racist and oppressive. And I can tell you instances within my own family over the years, from my father getting roughed up in the sixties, but after being pulled over by police officers, my brother, my brother as a child riding bicycle through our neighborhood, getting chased by police officers who thought, that little brown Indian-looking boy can't, obviously can't afford that bike. It must be stolen. To myself, doing something as simple as taking the trash out in my own, from my house, and a police officer drives by, and as I'm locking the gate and I turn around, they pull over, and they yell, what do you think you're doing? Because apparently I didn't look like I belonged to my own neighborhood. And I stood there, and I was shaking, and I said, I'm taking out my trash, and I was scared beyond belief. I had a cellphone in one hand and the keys in the other, and I was hoping they could see both. And then my son, who was thirteen years old at the time, walked out. They looked over at him, he looked over at me, he looked over at them, they looked back at me, they looked at each other, and they laughed, and they drove off. Because they knew, they knew what the fear they instilled in me, that microaggression. I bring this up because I, I think it's past time that we cut their budget and started investing in community programs. So I strongly, I strongly ask you guys to cut their, to cut their budget, defund them, reallocate that money. Thank you.
Thank you. Zulima will be followed by Phillip W.
Hi, good afternoon, mayor and council. First and foremost, I want to say rest in peace to Deion Johnson, who was murdered by a fifty-four-year-old man on duty who has fifteen years of service. He has not, he was not wearing a body cam. There's no dash cam footage. The state has yet to press charges, let alone release any information about the case. I can truly imagine that it's going to cost way more money to cover this up than stepping up and bringing justice. It's not amazing that the Phoenix PD has the highest rate of police brutality and killing civilians. It does not deserve more taxpayers' money. While we have an increase in unemployment rate, there's tons of homelessness. And let's not forget that hospitals are still struggling to receive adequate protection from coronavirus. I do not understand how you can sit there and not defund the Phoenix PD who don't enforce laws when history shows that they break it. It is incredibly easy to defund them. We have plenty of resources. I can guarantee that the people of Arizona, the people outside right now will gladly volunteer and help to redirect these funds to create alternative policies and hold these unexperienced, unethical men and women who swear to protect, and we need to held them accountable for their disgusting actions. We need to invest in our community development and bring change to our growing city. I will say God bless, but I believe that God is ashamed right now. Black Lives Matter. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Phillip will be followed by Greta Young. Phillip W. Warrior?
Mayor, we do not have audio for Phillip.
Thank you. We will go to Greta Young.
Greta is no longer on the line, mayor.
Excellent, I'm sorry. Thank you. Do we have Zoem Michaelis or Matthew Tanner?
We have Matthew Tanner.
Thank you. Matthew, the floor is yours, and you will be followed by Connor Cooper, if Connor is with us.
Sure, thank you. Please oppose this budget as it stands. Phoenix has a chance to take the lead nationally on a critical issue at a critical time. As Francis Fanon writes early on in Wretched of the Earth, "It is a known fact that under certain emotional circumstances, an obstacle actually escalates action." Oppose this budget, defund one of the most violent and deadly police forces in the country. We cannot continue the hypermilitarization of our city streets. To approve an increase of twenty-five million dollars to their operating budget is a more than tacit endorsement of not only the destruction and violence currently being wrought on our streets and communities by Phoenix PD in full view of the world, but also the violent oppression and targeting faced by black, indigenous, and Chicano people every day under normal circumstances at the hands of this department. Redirecting these funds to necessary community programs to help our most vulnerable populations is crucial to send the message that you do not support the terror storm of violence the police department is currently engaged in. Defund the police, end collaboration with ICE, free everybody, peace and respect to Councilwoman Carlos Garcia. It is an honor to address you today. Thank you for everything you do. Councilman DiCiccio, you are a national disgrace, an embarrassment, and a coward. We need justice for Deion Johnson before we even consider continuing to defund this department. Every dollar pumped into this department translates directly to suffering in our communities. Listen to the people outside your doors that you're supposed to represent. It's a hundred and ten degrees out there. It's a pandemic out there, and people are risking their lives just to plead with you. Black Lives Matter. If you increase the police budget by twenty-five million dollars while refusing to allot two-point-five million to the civilian review board you already approved, I sincerely wish you luck on your way out of the chamber today. Thank you for the chance to speak. Thank you to the others who have spoken, except for those of you determined to show exactly how much boot the human mouth can lick. Decarcerate Maricopa, defund the police, end collaboration with ICE. I yield my time.
Kyle Klein, followed by Anjales Maldonado.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Hi, council and mayor. My name is Kyle Klein. I'm a native Phoenician and registered Phoenix voter. I study political science at the University of Arizona as a current twenty-eighteen Flynn scholar. I stand before you today to urge you to fail the proposed twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one fiscal budget and to support brown, black, and indigenous communities in the wake of the murders of Deion Johnson and countless others. Research and our own professors from state universities have made it clear. The more civilian, the more police contact we have, the more unnecessary arrests, violence, and killings Phoenicians have to endure. The more police funding we have, the more civilian contact we have, and the more dead black and brown bodies. No one is advocating for a complete dissolution of the police force. However, Phoenix Police needs to be fundamentally reevaluated and restructured. Police should not be serving as mental health providers, SROs, or supposed community mediators. Rather, those resources need to be used to address racial disparities and police brutality that have existed in this country for centuries. The bare minimum is to completely fund the civilian review board and a twenty-five percent reduction of police funding. I ask each of you to consider a very simple question. Would you be happy to be treated the way black people are treated in this country? The honest answer is no. As a white man, I can never understand the struggle of POC in this country. However, it is the responsibility of every white person to ensure the color of your skin doesn't mark you as a criminal to be shot dead. Invest in the community and not police. Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Anjales will be followed by Will Knight.
Mayor, Anjales is no longer on the line.
Thank you. We will go next to Will Knight, followed by Mariah Bootiller.
Thank you, mayor and city council. My name is Will Knight. I am a Latino-American, and I have been directly impacted by our justice system. Being directly impacted is why I became a lawyer, and more recently, why I decided to run for Maricopa County Attorney on a platform of holding our government accountable to the people. Acceptance of responsibility is a key pillar of our approach to justice. For a minister of justice or a judicial officer, there is no more determinative factor when deciding an appropriate and proportional sanction than whether a wrongdoer has accepted responsibility for their harm. Right now, our community is crying out in unfathomable pain from the murder of George Floyd. Floyd's death was a catalyst, but there are so many others, like Deion Johnson, whose lives were snuffed out over decades of systemic racism and brutality. The public's trust in law enforcement and criminal justice is utterly fractured, and if we are to salvage the rule of law, we must accept responsibility. if we are to salvage the rule of law, we must accept responsibility for the harms we have inflicted on our most marginalized communities. We're here today to talk about funding the civilian review board. I oppose the budget proposal because it provides less than 15% of what is required to adequately, adequately fund it. We have a choice today. We can cut corners in the name of efficiency and pay for it many times over on the backend in the form of lawsuits, or we can instead choose to invest in transparency and invite our law enforcement partners into a forum where they can accept responsibility and work with us to move toward justice. Now, I know some may hear my words today and dismiss me as anti-cop, but nothing could be further from the truth. My grandfather was a good police officer, and he gave his life protecting the people that he served. This country was founded on consent of the governed. And make no mistake, given what we're seeing out here today, the people have revoked their consent. We are moving toward justice, and we can either join that movement or be swallowed by it. Because we can't truly believe that all that are created equal, that all lives truly matter until black lives matter.
Thank you. We will go to Mariah, followed by Dana Carey.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, I'm Mariah Boutier, and I am a, I am a resident in District Three here in Phoenix. I wanted to take a moment to speak in opposition of this proposed budget, specifically the increase, increase in budget to the police department here. I also want to go so far as to say that any decrease in the public safety budget in general should not be eaten by the fire department and EMT services in the city. They should continue to receive funding as they provide a vital service, especially considering the pandemic that we live in right now. We, as a community, cannot thrive and stand as one if we are only protecting a certain subset of our citizens. We all have a responsibility to one another, to protect and serve each other. And the people who are given power over us through the means of militarized weapons and riot gear should not get to choose who has humanity in our community. Every person deserves respect. Every person deserves life and good treatment. And black lives matter in this world, in this city, in this country. And it is a shame that we are not treating them that way at this time. We are all one community, and we deserve to be able to stand together and stand heard. We deserve to be able to assemble with our First Amendment rights and speak out about the horrors that we have seen and the troubles that our communities face. And we deserve funding for our communities, for education, for housing services, for food, and for healthcare. That is a right for every citizen, and for too long, it has not been afforded to black and brown, brown bodies in our community and in our country. So please, vote not to, please vote to defund the police in the future. They do not need the amount of money they have. That money goes towards arms corporations to increase militarization and allows and empowers the police force to act with authoritarian power. So please take care of your citizens.
Thank you. Dana will be followed by Ashlyn Pesh.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Good evening, Mayor Gallego and members of the council. My name is Dana Carey. I'm a white woman living in District Seven, and I believe black and brown lives matter. I have registered thousands of people to vote in Maricopa County. At least twenty times, black and brown citizens told me they would not register explicitly because they feel that politicians care so little about people of color that they don't see the point in voting. They feel that the government doesn't care about them. And when you offer just $400,000 to the CRB and OAT, you're proving their point. So please, to everyone on this council, show them that you do care by allocating $3 million. Last year's police budget was 721 million. This year's proposed budget is over $944.6 million. The current proposed amount for the CRB, at $400,000, would be around 0.04% of the proposed police budget. If we got the $2.5 million Councilman Garcia mentioned that we need from the police budget, that would leave them with $942 million, which is still $221 million more than last year. Please do not delay giving the CRB and OAT $3 million. They are only concerned with officers who abuse their power to hurt the public. The CRB won't come after innocent officers. So please, help the community to reprimand or remove those officers who do not keep us safe. Please help us stay safe and heal from police brutality. Do not delay funding the CRB with $3 million. Let the nonprofit and business world add to that $3 million. For now, the city of Phoenix and Phoenix PD have to stop failing its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashlyn, followed by Erin Kane. Do we have Ashlyn? Erin Kane, followed by Joy Ivy.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, my name is Erin Kane, and I live in District Eight. I'm speaking to oppose the budget as proposed and ask that $3 million be allocated to the Office of Accountability and Transparency. I'm also calling for 25% of police funding to be reallocated to help educate and heal our communities through community development and enrichment. The people outside are demanding accountability for the police that have a history of violence and abuse, and we won't stop until accountability is attained. Do you want the governor to continue, continue this curfew passed next week? Does the council really want the protests to continue gridlocking downtown Phoenix? Do you want businesses to continue closing early? And do you want your people to have to march day after day after day in the heat of our summer? We're just demand, demanding accountability, and the cost of that accountability is less than 1% of the outrageous amount that has been proposed for the Phoenix Police. We've all seen the videos of officers brutally pushing, beating, firing tear gas, and shooting rubber bullets at peaceful protesters, reporters, and medics throughout the country. We've seen the videos of George Floyd, Eric Gardner, and Ahmaud Arbery. The public demands accountability so that these practices are punished and so that we can have a future where they don't take place. Please fully fund the Office of Accountability and Transparency to the tune of $3 million. I know you can find the money, you can find almost a billion dollars for our police. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy will be followed by Katie Aries.
Can you hear me? Yes. Okay. I'd like to start by saying that black lives matter, justice for Dion Johnson, justice for George Floyd, justice for Tony McDade, justice for Breonna Taylor, and justice for Ahmaud Arbery. As an educator, grad student, and most importantly, as a black Phoenician, I oppose the proposed budget and urge this council to reconsider the allocations to Phoenix PD for the next fiscal year. I ask that you redirect funds to programs that heal and educate the community and increase the proposed budgets for community development and enrichment. In 2018, Phoenix PD was ranked highest in the nation for its cases of police killing civilians. Police forces across the country have proven time and time again that diversifying and implementing various trainings have not and will not end police brutality. The city needs and deserves policing alternatives and investments in mental health and trauma services, education after school care, adequate housing, healthcare, and employment opportunities. Defund Phoenix PD and allocate city funds to policies and programs that will create and sustain a safe community for everyone, but especially for the black lives that are currently being disregarded by Phoenix PD. Mayor Gallego, no more photo ops with black and brown communities. It's time that you hold yourself and Jerry Williams accountable for the murders that have happened under her watch as chief of Phoenix Police. Including the murder of Dion Johnson, whose family still demands that Phoenix PD release information regarding Dion's murder at the hands of Arizona DPS. I'd like to echo statements from true leaders in our community, like those with Mass Liberation Arizona, who demand that Phoenix PD take accountability for the murder of Dion Johnson instead of kneeling alongside protesters disingenuously. It doesn't only divert attention from the systemic issues of institutional racism that protect murderous cops and put black and brown people in cages, but it also completely ignores an entire movement with coordinated and intentional demands that advance the liberation of black and brown people. Power to all the people. With that, I yield my time.
Katie will be followed by Blythe Mark.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Katie Aries, and I'm here representing the Arizona Coalition to end sexual, sexual and domestic violence. We are here today in solidarity with Black Lives Matter, Phoenix Metro, and Poderin Action, and call on you to pass a budget that prioritizes healthy communities and to not increase police budget or criminalization. We are living through an epidemic, not only one of COVID-19, but also one of trauma. Childhood trauma, generational trauma, and historical trauma all have profound impacts on many communities, and police violence is one of the many ways black and brown communities are further traumatized. Criminalization does not allow anyone or any community to heal. This is why we urge you to divest from police and invest in social and human services and alternative safety responses, prioritizing healthy communities and healing. We urge you to pass a budget that supports police accountability and put an end to the collaboration between Phoenix Police and ICE. Finally, we want to uplift the demand to raise $3 million for the undocumented relief fund. I thank you for your time and consideration, and with that, I yield my time.
Blythe will be followed by Yerita Flores.
Hello?
Hello.
Cool. Thelma, Jim, Deborah, Laura, Sal, Betty, Michael, Carlos. 2020 is one for the history books. Guaranteeing investment approaching $1 billion to the Public Safety Department will guarantee your place in Arizona civil history as proponents and enablers of belligerent police violence. Five hundred to eight hundred more officers, more body cameras. Just a few days ago, in the death of David McTeat at the hands of Louisville Police, their cameras were, for some reason, turned off. Some may say they simply malfunctioned. Whoopsie, stop kidding yourselves. In our own backyard, body camera footage of Dion Johnson's death at the hands of DPS still hasn't been released. Body cam footage mysteriously disappearing is not a mere malfunction. This is a system working as it was built to function. These actions are the walls, the doors, the very foundation of the police force. In that same vein, turn your webcams on. We deserve to see your faces as we speak. DeCecio, you say any opposition to full funding of the police is a kick in the teeth. They have riot gear, helmets, and bulletproof vests. What about a fellow officer kneeling on your neck for over eight minutes until you expiciate to death as other officers watch? Or shooting you in the skull with rubber bullets? Or tear gassing you, defying Geneva Convention orders and committing objectively-defined war crimes? Actually, you don't have to worry about that happening to you, do you? Your tongue must hurt from licking so many boots. Cops are part of an institutional death cult full of former jocks, current cucks, and lifelong bullies that subjugate dissent, protect property, and ensure a future free of black joy, free of black boys and girls living their fullest lives. They have blood on their hands. Mayor Gallego, you also have blood on your hands unless you and the city council decide to reallocate funds. We give you your power, so take it and use it. Do not pass the 2020 budget and come up with a better solution. Reform is not the answer. Revolution now. And yes, black lives matter. I yield my time.
Yerita will be followed by Cecily Fort.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Hello, we can hear you.
Hi, I am here to oppose the proposed budget. I grew up having a police presence in all of my schools set to convince black and brown youth that they had the sole intention of protecting us, to later see on the news the same black and brown youth being apprehended and murdered at the hands of the cops sent into my schools. The Phoenix Police Department is one of the deadliest forces in the nation, and I cannot wrap my head around allocating them almost a billion dollars. Crime in Phoenix is not random. It is due to the fact that people of this community are not able to meet their basic needs. By shifting the budget away from the police toward services that will heal and educate our community, we will be able to completely rid the need for policing. In order to truly fight crime, as you say, we don't, we don't need more cops, we need more jobs and opportunities that will uplift our people and not kill them. One more thing, end your lethal collaboration with ICE. I've grown up every day fearing for my life, my family, and my community. I fear we will be stopped by the Phoenix Police Department and then transferred into ICE custody. End your relationship now. Get police out of schools and relocate the funds to the community, not the police. You are taking an active role in the genocide of black people. Black lives matter. Stand for them. They need Justin, justice. Dion's family needs justice. Defund the police now.
Cecily, followed by Rigel Bobadia.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Cecily Fort, and I am a teacher at Girls Leadership Academy of Arizona. Mayor Gallego, I'm not sure how many graduation videos you filmed this year for our 2020 seniors, but the video you filmed specifically for our school was very inspiring. And these girls are going to lead us into the future. They won't be able to do so if their freedoms are hampered by a militarized police force that sees the color of their skin before they see anything else and shoots indiscriminately into crowds of peaceful protesters using their First Amendment rights. Their families currently suffer under the systemic bias present in the Phoenix Police Force. Some of their relatives have been victims of police brutality here in the city that we all want to love. We need oversight for these officers and outside civilian review board that we've already promised to fund here in this chamber. Officers that break the law need to be held accountable for their actions and not just fired, but also prosecuted. Officers that are a part of racist hate groups on social media should be fired. If teachers are held accountable for what we post on social media, they should be as well. There needs to be more training for police by outside organizations. It shouldn't take more education to be a barber than a police officer. And all citizens should be treated equally. Protesters with guns on the state Capitol a few weeks ago were not met with rubber bullets and tear gas. The police should be de-escalating, not showing up to peaceful protests in riot gear. Let the city be an example for what's right. Let's work together with the community and not against it. And I, again, I'm speaking from right outside the chambers, so I am right. So when I say here in this chamber, I guess I'm right outside the chamber.
Thank you. Rigel or Rigel, followed by Michelle Kuhn. Okay, not hearing. I will go to Michelle Kuhn, followed by Michelle Hornstein.
Mayor, Michelle is not on the line.
Oh, thank you. Then we, i- is Michelle with us? She would be followed by Matt Bridges, if she is.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. My name is Michelle Hornstein. I'm a proud member of Unite Here Local 11. I want to add my voice in solidarity to those expressing outrage at the violence and extreme misconduct of police around our country and here in Phoenix. I want to express my support of a fully funded OAT and CRB in the city of Phoenix. What we need is transparency, and we need it right now. There seems to be little accountability when the police are in charge of policing themselves. It isn't working, and it's glaringly clear that police brutality everywhere, including our own city. The violence we've seen recently with George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Dion Johnson, and countless others is just the tip of the iceberg. This will continue to be the narrative of our country if elected officials sit idly by with nothing more than sending condolences and giving no repercussions to those dangerous officers supposedly there to keep us safe. Councilmembers, we are in historic times. I implore you today to stand on the right side of history. Human lives depend on you taking that stand and saying, "Yes, we will hold our police force accountable for the damage they cause. We will hold officers accountable for the violence they inflict on our communities, and we want to fix this broken system." More specifically, black and brown lives depend on you taking that stand. It might feel uncomfortable, but no cause worth fighting for was ever won by staying in a comfort zone. People are dying in our country at the hands of police violence without any justice, and it's an affront to our citizens. As our Constitution says, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice." Well, we, the people, are outraged, and we want justice for the people who have lost their lives due to police brutality. I hope that with a fully funded OAT and CRB, the city of Phoenix can begin a process of mending a system that isn't working and start to see real change. Black Lives Matter, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Matt Bridges, followed by Haley Williams.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Matt Bridges. I'm a white, year-long, Phoenix resident and a homeowner in District 6. I reject the current 2020 to 2021 budget proposal and instead support the immediate full funding of the Office of Accountability and Transparency and the Civilian Review Board. If the police are acting properly, the review board will show that. What are we so afraid of? I'm ashamed we are looking in the couch cushions to fund this. This money needs to come from the police fund. Right now, the city of Phoenix has to start cultivating trust between civilians and the police. Look at what's happening around the nation right now. Outside of your offices, right now. Listen to the overwhelming majority of speakers today in this meeting. Let's wake up, this is a culture issue. We need to divert funds away at least 25% from the police and start funding police alternatives, like sending social workers to act as first responders in appropriate situations. We need funding for mental health, trauma services, education, housing, and employment. This problem is not going away, and we are not going away. We are united, organized, and determined. Black Lives Matter, thank you.
Thank you, Haley, followed by Will Meester. Haley Williams?
Hello?
Hello? Yes, we can.
Hi, so I just wanted to pretty much start this off by saying, Black Lives Matter. Deion, Deion Johnson's life mattered, and we need for the police to be transparent with his death. No one, I have not had any of you bring awareness to his death and that he mattered and that his family deserves to know what happened to him, because he's not coming home to his family. You guys are going home to your family, he is not. And then another thing I want to address is that, why do you guys want to continue giving money to a police force that is said to protect and serve its people, but it's not protecting and serving? Why not give that money to what so many people are trying to bring awareness to you about? Why not give that money to teachers, first responders, social workers, and then to the man before that says it's a kick in, kick in the teeth to the police? What about our teachers that are not getting paid enough, that are spending their own money to provide merchandise for their students? What about our first responders, EMTs, firefighters, who put their lives on the line just as much as the police officers to protect us, but they're not getting the pay they deserve? That's all I have to say, Black Lives Matter and justice to Deion Johnson, thank you.
Thank you, Will will be followed by Nicholas Pesh.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I very strongly oppose this budget. As someone else mentioned, last year, a database of racist Facebook posts by ICE police officers was released. Apparently, our police chief's response was to move these officers to desk assignments. But even that, we should know that they were only the officers that were foolish enough to post those views publicly. And beyond that, the Phoenix PD Association went on to respond even more cowardly as they advertised a service to scrub their Facebook posts. In 2015, ACLU found that 37,467 pieces of military equipment were acquired through a program at Arizona agencies from the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office alone. That included a 50 caliber heavy machine gun, 120 assault rifles, five armored vehicles, and 10 helicopters. Unsurprisingly, doing that has not eased the worries and distress and tension between the police and the public. Knowing those, how can we assume that they're going to keep themselves accountable? All the while, we've been steadily reducing the proportion of the budget put towards community development, community enrichment, and even environmental services. We're raising it for public safety. It's now going to be about three quarters of the budget, just for public safety. Since 2010 to 2011, Phoenix has increased their budget by $300 million, which has made up now, again, about 76% of the overall budget increase. Now, similarly, the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality wasn't so lucky. I'm aware that's funny about a state, but dropping pollution control programs by 29% and staffing by 32%, it just exemplifies how important services that protect the public and serve our people are gutted. While Phoenix empowers the police to kill with impunity using our tax dollars. We paid for reform measures in body cameras and it hasn't worked. Justice for Deion Johnson, Antonio RC, and all other victims of police violence, yield my time.
Nicholas will be followed by Amira Lowry. Nick?
Yeah, hello? Hello? Hi, can you hear me? Yes. Hi. My name is Nicholas Pesh. I'm an Arizona teacher. I've trained professionally as a teaching intern in two different Phoenix school districts, and I had the fortune of interning under Hope Six Funding with the City of Phoenix Housing and Parks and Rec while I was getting my degree in social work. I'd like to say that I oppose the current budget proposal today out of concern for the black children and families living in Phoenix, who will continue to suffer uniquely and unjustly at the hands of an overfunded and overtly violent police department if the public safety budget is allocated as planned. I am in favor of the demands that have already been made clear by organizations like Poderin Action, Mass Liberation AV, and Black Lives Matter Phoenix Metro, among them that their Phoenix police should be defunded by 25% by June 17th, and these funds redistributed to other programs, specifically within community development and community enrichment. I submit that defunding the Phoenix Police and funding actual programs intended to heal the brutality that they and other historically racist systems have wreaked on the community is a financial vote in support of justice for Deion Johnson, George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, to name only a few recent victims of the murder of black people by supposed officers of public safety acting under the protection of the US flag. Defunding the Phoenix Police now is a bold financial vote in support of black Phoenicians and all black Americans, Americans who are and have been sick and tired of the fear that our state and country has had the audacity to insist that they endure. I would go so far as to call such a move courageous if it had happened without this pressure and national fury. I also have Ashlyn Pesh with me, if it's all right to give her her chance to speak. No additional time. Go ahead, but it would be the same time as. Okay, yes, I'm sorry, we, we, go ahead, you can have two minutes. Yeah, we, I'm sorry, we, you did have two minutes earlier, and I think we couldn't hear you, so two minutes for Ashlyn.
Okay, so I just would like to say, my name is Ashlyn Pesh. I'm calling today to ask you to reconsider the proposed funds for the Phoenix Police for the fiscal year 2020 through 2021. I believe that the money allocated for the Phoenix PD could be better used to serve the community as it's evident that the Phoenix PD does very little to nothing to safely or effectively help the community. I ask that the Phoenix PD be defunded by June 17th by at least 25% and request that this money instead be allocated to programs that legitimately benefit the community, such as housing, community development, community enrichment, et cetera. I also ask that the money that is ultimately allocated to the Phoenix PD include a budget that supports police accountability. The Phoenix Police Department is one of the most lethal in the nation, and to increase their budget is to show a complete lack of concern for the safety lives of the people in the Phoenix community. We still do not have information about the shooting of Deion Johnson by Phoenix PD. Why are police officers being so violent towards peaceful protesters? Why are protesters being turned over to ICE? I urge you to defund Phoenix PD, release the information regarding Deion Johnson, and stop releasing protesters in custody to ICE. The Phoenix community cannot be safe until action is taken, thank you.
Thank you, Amira, followed by Nitya Agarwal.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome, so firstly, I want to stand in solidarity with those who are outside in triple-degree weather, begging and pleading for the city council to hear them, begging and pleading for you all to understand where we're coming from. And at the very least, we're not asking for you to understand, we're demanding that you understand. Two, I want to say that, one, I oppose the budget. I deeply and strongly oppose the budget. I want to see the police budget decrease by at least 25%, at least. And then also the CRB and the Office of Accountability and Transparency be fully funded. The fact that we sat there and begged y'all to give it to us in the first place, and now we gotta beg for money too? Man, you really want to spit in our face with that, and that's exactly how it feels. Moving on, so I do want to talk about, um, yeah, so to think that the police get $900 million to abuse us and attack us and murder us. As a black woman in America and as a black woman in Phoenix, it feels like I'm paying you all to kill me. I'm sure everyone, all black people in Phoenix probably feel that way because the fact that y'all give so much money to the police and they do such a terrible job, it just shows where your priorities lie. People are asking for money for mental health services, for education, teachers having to buy their own supplies. You should be ashamed of yourselves for putting this budget in front of us. And also the fact that people want to call it a balanced budget. This is not a balanced budget. This is completely skewing to the side of police, completely skewing to the side of their egos and the police unions that y'all refuse to stand up against. Moving on, the idea that you want to put the burden on philanthropic and the community to pay for it, I mean, come on, if philanthropy hasn't done anything up until now, what do you think they're gonna do next, right? And at the end of the day, if you allow corporations and companies to take control of that money, then it's gonna be a CRB sponsored by Chase Bank, watch. Moving on, so at the end of the day, it's, it's just crazy to me that you all sat there and denied us.
Thank you for your testimony. Nitya will be followed by Bruce Ironheart.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Nitya Agarwal, and I would like you to reconsider the proposed $944 million allocated to public safety and consider redirecting those funds to programs that heal and educate our community by increasing the proposed budgets for community development and enrichment. Because the Phoenix Police is statistically ranked highest in the country for cases of police killing civilians, I also believe that we need stronger accountability and citizen review board practices, and the money for that should come from the public safety budget. I also want to say that the budget for the police should be defunded by at least 25%, and that money should be moved into programs that advocate for safe and healthy communities. And we should be passing a budget that prioritizes healthy communities rather than police pay raises. Finally, I just want to say Black Lives Matter, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bruce will be followed by Nihara Rika Jane.
Hello?
Hello?
How are you today? Thank you for your time, I'm downtown here with the people who are marching. I'd like you to have more time to say a lot because I've discovered that a lot of times when you have something to say, people don't have much time to listen to what you have to say. They might kind of make their decisions quickly. I hear two arguments going on here from many constituents all over the city. The two arguments are that, one, we don't want to be beat up by the police. Two, we want to be protected by the police. Both things can happen. If we allocate the budget properly, if we make different decisions, I don't necessarily know the answers. This guy who's running for candidate for mayor of Phoenix, I can tell you, it's been real clear to me that you have been either tone deaf or not listening to people. I'm out here in the crowd, they're yelling. People are totally disregarding, including the Attorney General, the order for the curfew. So why haven't you come out to see, speak to the people? And this goes for a lot of you. So DeCiccio sits there and trumps about how he cares about the police, hasn't shown his donation, and he knows what I'm talking about. Now, Carlos, I know he's out there leading the people, and he's got a voice. And I can tell you that there are a third of this town that are Latino, and they're not heard because I know what the voting numbers look like. And nobody in this town the last 20 years has voted for more than, in their district, 25% by 25% rate. So in other words, the city doesn't even really care who the mayor is. What we need is a mayor who listens to the people, who engages with people. So I want to tell you what the people are saying. Straight out of Tent City, between Ninth Avenue and 12th, Kathy sent me a text, and she wants you to know that the police, by sending out these flashbangs and that sort of thing, are upsetting people who have PTSD living in those tents. My time is up, but I have a lot more.
Nihara Rika will be followed by Brian Messina.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you to the city council for this opportunity for the public to speak on this item. Hundreds of law-abiding citizens have used their voice in opposition to item 44 today to ask you for something profound. They're asking for your commitment to public safety by reallocating funds to public safety. It's quite telling how unsafe Phoenix PD makes its own civilians feel if this is the case. I oppose the allocations of funds to the police force and advocate for the redistribution of this budget to add to the allocation for community development and enrichment. As a recent master's grad from ASU and academic researcher, I asked the council to consider research-supported solutions when making public policy decisions. I recognize that the council is interested in listening to solutions for police violence, but increasing police funds simply is not one. I'm asking for consideration to reduce funds to public safety. Peer-reviewed research from May 2019 in the Proceedings of the National Academy of Sciences has shown that the traditional solutions, such as body cams, don't actually reduce police violence. However, governing the use of force, and perhaps my most important point, reducing the amount of military weapons, do. I'm also asking for consideration to redistribute 25% of the allocated police funds to increased funds to community development and enrichment. A peer-reviewed publication from 2017 in the American Sociological Review finds that for every 10 nonprofit organizations devoted to crime and community, murder is reduced by 9%, violent crime is reduced by 6%, and property crime is reduced by 4%. We all agree that serving public safety is the end goal, but increasing the force of the police department does not have the data-driven evidence to reduce crime. Increasing programs for community development and enrichment does. When police forces are less deadly, crime goes down. Thank you again.
Thank you, Brian will be followed by Greta Young.
Hello, my name is Brian Messinas. I'm a resident of District 2 and a constituent of Councilmember Waring. I'm speaking today in strong opposition to the budget in its current state. It is a disgrace that Phoenix would sooner and more enthusiastically give money to the police department to purchase an LRAD, essentially a sound cannon, that regardless of what you say, will end up being weaponized against black and brown people over investing in housing solutions for our large homeless population, over environmental programs that will prepare our city for the threats of the climate crisis, over community enrichment and development, over job assistance, over healthcare, over education, over mental health services, and over every service and resource in this city that will educate and heal our community. We must defund Phoenix Police Department by at least 25% and reallocate these funds to services and programs that have been sorely underfunded and ignored in this budget process. We must also ensure that there is adequate funding for civilian oversight, accountability, and transparency, as well as ensure that Phoenix Police ends collaboration with ICE. Thank you.
Thank you. Greta Young.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I was on the line earlier, but unable to, so I appreciate that. My name is Greta Young, and I wish to express my opposition to this proposed budget. And in particular, my objections lie in cutting and underfunding the accountability and oversight measures as a mere cost-saving device, while continuing to use taxpayer dollars to fund lethal police aggression that is rooted in systemic racism and white supremacy. And that's tough for me to say right now, right? Because I'm white, and it's not a pleasant lesson in history, and it's not a comfortable exercise in self-examination. But I intend to use my privilege today to offer something other than tacit approval or direct complicity. Letting police self-monitor, self-report, and self-correct does not work. It's not working now, and it's claiming innocent lives. I don't claim to have the best solution or all the answers, but I am willing to learn to, learn from, listen to, and then also follow the lead of the families and the communities who are disproportionately affected by police violence. Are you? It's great that the budget includes some funds for parks or improved lighting or arts and culture, but none of that is going to matter if the city keeps lynching people with public funds. For everybody who's still there downtown, it is amazing, I was there earlier. We can hear you on the call through the walls of the city council chamber. Keep standing up, keep speaking out, Black Lives Matter, thank you.
Cole Cifus, followed by Tara Loman-Rohas.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Hi. The reason I'm speaking today is because the budget as proposed sends the wrong message to this community. The reason for the unrest, not only in our city, but also in the nation at large, is a result of overpolicing and police brutality with no reliable accountability measures. Phoenix is ranked highest in the nation for police killings of civilians. By allocating almost one billion dollars to policing at the expense of community enrichment and education programs, you are essentially rewarding and incentivizing police misconduct. To emphasize the disparity here, the budget proposed allocates over nine hundred and forty-four million dollars to police and only fifty-one million dollars to community and enrichment education programs, despite community programs' far better track record of reducing crime. I ask that the council here today, defund the Phoenix PD. I implore you to invest in our community's enrichment education. Show that you are listening when we take to the streets. Show us that you care. Do not act in fear of your own community. Act out of the goodness of your hearts. Thank you.
Tara Loman Rojas, followed by Toby Rathbun.
Oh, hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Uh, hello, my name's Tara Loman Rojas. I am a third-generation Arizonan, um, ASU graduate, a long-time lover of the desert and I'm very excited to be here and talk to you guys. I am here to demand that the current budget be revised and that at least twenty-five percent of the funds allocated towards public safety or the police department be reallocated to mental health, crisis services, and housing. I've seen firsthand uh, the trauma that the police department inflicts on our community on a regular basis and believe that it's about time that some of those funds get uh, moved to the people who are um, providing support uh, in the aftermath of of those events. So, and I also, more importantly, uh, not more importantly, just as as important, urge that the three million dollars be allocated to the civilian review board today and not in a fashion that I believe was recommended earlier that would reduce the amount of paperwork that would be needed in order to get uh, this program funded. Thank you and I yield my time.
Thank you. Toby will be followed by Manuel Saldana.
Mayor, Toby is no longer on the line.
Oh, thank you. Manuel will be next and then Abigail Verdugo.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we can.
Oh, hi. Yeah, um, I'm calling because I'm also uh, wanting to defund the Phoenix PD. The last few times that I've encountered uh, them, they've they've been unprofessional and have not, have have always been harming the the community. I live in Garfield and on Sunday, I did not attend the protest, but on my way home, I saw them driving around my neighborhood like if it was a war zone. I'm a veteran and seeing the helicopters and seeing their tactics reminded me of a war zone. Nobody was wearing PPE on concerns of COVID-nineteen. Uh, they stopped and started arresting youth without any, asking any questions and my neighbors were coming outside all frightened. Uh, one of them threatened to jump over my fence and arrest my guest. Uh, he didn't mention what law we were breaking and he got angry and yelled at us. Uh, I also saw when they were driving away, they drove away in Tahoe's uh, police cruisers with the doors open and their shotguns hanging out, nothing secure. Uh, a few months ago, a police officer hit me with his door when I was recording them. I've also worked as a youth uh, healthcare worker and I've, and we've worked with de-escalation and ways to not harm uh, youth that we worked with. And I have not seen one police officer do any of that kind of training. I don't think that we are supposed to be giving any money to a police force that has been harming the people and when we could be using that for the undocumented uh, COVID relief fund or we could be using that for Red uh, Red for Ed. Uh, I applaud all the people that came out in this heat. I've seen people uh, hurting and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Abby Verdugo, followed by Jawaher Abbas.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Uh, my name is Abby and I'm a Doran scholar studying at NEU. I am opposed to giving police more resources to kill and subjugate black and minority lives through this year's public safety budget. I have lived in Glendale for twenty years and went around police. I have never felt safe. As a council member, I know you have put long hours into deciphering which allocation money for this year's budget, but your proposed budget will not serve us in the way you guys intend it to. I implore you to not adopt the current public safety budget, even if it is easier for you to do nothing, Councilwoman Debra Stark. Reallocate the money towards what will make the city a safer community for everyone, specifically our targeted black brothers and sisters, urging us to fight against oppressive system the police and so many institutions are based on. The Office of Accountability and Transparency is only three million, nothing compared to the nine hundred forty-four million proposed for public safety that police will use. How can holding police accountable for how they treat citizens be negative, Mayor Gallego? Time and time again, we have seen police officers abuse their authority and murder innocent black lives because they are not held accountable. The incident report of Dion Johnson has still not been released and you believe there's no room for improvement? I have seen police officers doing Brett drive-bys, shooting rubber bullets at peaceful protesters upholding their rights and throwing tear gas at peaceful protesters and medics in the middle of a respiratory pandemic. This cannot wait another month, another year. We need you to care and impose change now. You care about public safety? Prove it through your actions now and invest at least twenty-five percent of the public safety budget in community programs that will heal and help us. Such as mental health and trauma programs, education without bias, after-school care, adequate housing for homeless, healthcare. In the city of Phoenix, and please fully fund the Office of Accountability and Transparency. Invest in things that will make black, indigenous, brown, mentally ill, homeless people safe and heard. Majority of those people have shown this message and they feel unheard by you. Specifically, Mayor Gallego and Councilwoman Stark. I hope that you can find it in you, not make decisions based on your experiences. Show us you, Black Lives Matter and that you and to the.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Abbas, followed by Henry Montalvo.
He said we were next. Go, you're next. I don't know why he told you that. Why did you tell him you're next?
James, no.
Jawaher is next. Who is Jawaher? I don't know how you're speaking, Jawaher. Go, Jawaher, we have your back. Go, sister.
Mr. Abbas, we are ready for you.
I told you not to say it.
Jawaher? Okay, we will go to Henry Montalvo, followed by Sachi Podar.
Hello?
Hello?
Uh, give me one. Good afternoon, my name is Senator Montalvo. I'm a proud member of the United Here Local Eleven. I want to add my voice to those expressing anger and their violence in this context of the police everywhere and the police uh, here in Phoenix. And I wanna express my full soul, my full sponsors' office, express my support of a full-funded office and accountability and transparency and civilian review board in the city of Phoenix. Uh, the only reason I do support it is because I have been an advocate and I had been accosted by police as well. I have plenty of times had been pulled over for no specific reason whatsoever, other than just striving. I've had weapons pulled on me by Phoenix PD for no apparent reason. And the only thing that actually saved me was my Second Amendment right, when they had to literally pull me physically out of the vehicle and saw my side, saw my sidearm. If this is the PD that we want, we need a review board. So I am against funding Phoenix PD any further until there is something legitimately done about making a citizen review board. Thank you.
Thank you. Sachi, followed by Sandy Viatoro Paraj.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Sachi. I'm a resident of Arizona. I'm in opposition of the proposed nine hundred and forty-four million plus dollars allocated to our Public Safety Department for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one fiscal year. Our community asks that you redirect up to twenty-five percent of these funds to programs that heal and educate our community. I also support the civilian oversight of police activity. Phoenix Police Department is statistically ranked highest in the country for cases of police killing civilians. A portion of the nine hundred and forty-four million dollar budget is to be directed towards diversifying and implementing various training. In the events over the last few days, multiple other states have shown that this training has not and will not end police brutality. I want to say Dion Johnson's name as he is an example of this brutality in our own state. Mr. Garcia, I respect you for your choice of clothing today. I see you. I have been a volunteer at the ICAM program for more than a year. This program provides tutoring and technology and meals to young kids living in lower-class families. These programs have proven to help children reduce their confrontation with drug abuse and crime. We must start by investing in the younger generation. Our community needs and deserves alternatives, investments in mental health, trauma services, education, after-school care, adequate housing, healthcare, employment, different opportunities. These investments are in the Community Development and Community Enrichment Program budgets. However, the budgets are still so small. These redirect the frustration of citizens into more constructive outlets through community development and enrichment, rather than resorting to violence. Please consider redirecting a portion of the Phoenix Police budget. Please allocate a portion of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one funds to policies and programs that will create, enrich, and sustain a safe and connected community. I would like to take my last ten seconds to stay silent for George Floyd, Dion Johnson, and every other person of color whose life was taken in police brutality. Please join me in a moment of silence for the lives lost for the rest of my time.
No, I'm muted. Yeah.
Thank you. Sandy will be followed by Ciara, DC.
Hello, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Sandy Viatoro Porro. I just wanted to talk to you that I am opposed to the budget for the police department. The fact that you wanna pass this while this, the protesters and rioters says a lot about what you trying to find eye to. A lot of people say, if you're so against the, I hope you don't have to call them. To be completely honest, I have called them and they have never thanked. Excuse it, the excuse they gave me was that I was in a high-crime area. I was in two thousand eighteen and now I try to stay away from anything that looks like police can be called for. Why? Because I am an Latina woman. I'm afraid to drive with my children because I'm afraid I will be shot down like Calandro Casil. I'm afraid that even though I am no danger to anyone and I have no police record, I will be seen as a danger to any cop that wants to be, that wants to arrest me or take me out for being brown. People have lasted lives for the color of, when every school or event tutor gets taken in hand, that's a damn corpse. Where is the accountability? Unfortunately, you guys are looking the wrong way. We can always rebuild the city, but we can never bring back the lives that have been. Thank you.
Thank you. Ciara will be followed by Alana Vahaba.
I've been like that since two-thirty.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. First, I want to acknowledge all of those who have put their health, health and lives on the line that are outside uh, this meeting in this terrible uh, three-digit weather. I really appreciate all of you guys and your sacrifice in um, support of Black Lives. Um, I am participating in this public hearing to oppose the budget as it has been allocated for twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one for the city of Phoenix. And um, specifically, I just think the budget as it has been drafted is reflecting really terrible misguided uh, priorities right now. We are in a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic and this budget allocating almost a billion dollars to uh, public safety and I know that includes, you know, fire and um, other first responders. But I, as I've been hearing from um, my, the other supporters that are against this budget, over five hundred million dollars to the police in the time where we can't even get adequate COVID testing, we can't even, you know, lock down uh, the city in a way that we can manage this pandemic. There's over eleven thousand people who have coronavirus in the area. It's just mismanaging your priorities. You're not looking out for the people. Also, it, the councilman that spoke at the beginning about a kick in the teeth, you are a public servant. What you said was quite disgusting and it was quite enraging to me. It was ridiculous. You need to put the public first. The police officer are also part of the public, but they're in a small amount compared to this population. There's over a million people who live in Phoenix. You need to listen to their voices. I've sat here for over four hours now and you need to listen to the public. Black Lives Matter.
Thank you. Alana will be followed by Sedona Urias.
Hello, members of the council. Uh, I've been here for this entire council. I hope you're not tired of listening to the overwhelmingly consistent message of the citizens of Phoenix today because it is necessary that you hear us. Uh, maybe you can turn on your cameras so that we can see you're actually listening, Councilman and Mayor Gallego. To do, to not do so is truly an act of bad faith. We deserve to see that you're paying attention. My name is Dr. Alana Vahaba. I'm a social scientist, researcher, and constituent of District Seven. I'm here to say that the death of Dion Johnson and too many others at the hands of police have shown that we desperately need to divert funding from the police and into communities. We do not need militarized police in our streets. I'm appalled by what I saw happening in Garfield a few days ago where police boxed in protesters who were trying to get home from the curfew and even drew people off their property to arrest them. The research has shown that body cams and implicit bias trainings do not work well enough to stop the escalating police violence against our communities. We need police to be genuinely accountable for their actions. Even one death by a police officer is totally unacceptable. The demonstrators outside and myself collectively demand that Phoenix defund the police by twenty-five percent of the proposed budget. This council should put our tax money into building communities, libraries, parks, homeless services, an undocumented relief fund, educational programming, and after-school care. You should expand transportation and free drug recovery programs and create non-police alternative services for those in need, particularly when mental illness is involved. Police have shown again and again an inability to de-escalate those situations, so we need funded alternatives. Lastly, a civilian review board and the Office of Accountability and Transparency is an absolutely necessary step for ensuring community stability. But we need to fund it properly. Be a leader in this country. Don't give police raises or military weapons while they kill us.
Sedona Urias, followed by Julianne Mate.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Sedona Udis Ramanet. I am a Phoenix resident of District Eight, born and raised. I oppose and I ask you to please oppose the proposed nine hundred forty-four million, six hundred eighty thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollar budget allocated to our Public Safety Department, specifically the money allocated to the Phoenix Police Department for the twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one fiscal year, please. Our community asks that you defund the police department at the very least by twenty-five percent. Please use those funds to increase the proposed budgets for community development, enrichment, citizens review board, and Office of Accountability and Transparency. I, along with an overwhelming majority of Phoenix residents, are disgusted with the actions of the Phoenix Police Department, which is statistically ranked one of the highest in the country for police violence against its citizens. You really want to fund and reward a police department like that? We need the citizens review board and the Office of Accountability and Transparency to be fully funded. Lastly, we want answers and justice for the killing of Dion Johnson. I yield my time.
Thank you. Julianne. Mate. Julianne. And it would remind everyone to stay muted during the council speakers. So I believe we do not have Julianne Mate or Mate. We will go then to Amanda Tudabuki. Mandy, are you with us?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Mandy Tui Tuvuki. I live on the south side of Phoenix. I work as a school social worker on the south side of Phoenix. I raise my kids on the south side of Phoenix. My husband works for the county crisis line. I say this to say that there are many effective ways to keep our people safe besides policing them. Research and statistics show that more police does not equal more safety. Thank you, Councilman Garcia, for proposing the increase in funding for the OAT and the Civilian Review Board. I support that at least 3 million total be allocated to the OAT and CRB, which is an insignificant amount of funding compared to the 994 million that we are allocating to public safety and to police. We need this money. Without proper funding, this board will be more of a token effort than a functioning effort to restore trust in our police. Right now, that trust is broken. That trust is not present. And let me address previous comments by Councilman DeCiccio. Councilman DeCiccio, when the people are committed to have oversight and accountability of one of the most statistically lethal departments, and that is somehow insulting to you and to police, that is the exact apathy and authoritarian mindset that continues to perpetuate distrust of the police institutions and of the distrust of community so-called leaders like you who call for symbolic safety instead of actually wanting safety for Phoenix residents. I am in opposition to the current budget proposal. My primary concerns are the significant underfunding of community development and enrichment programs, which are the exact prevention and support strategies we need to strengthen our community's safety and be preventative and empathetically responsive to communities and not relying primarily on reactive, punitive, observably dehumanizing, and increasingly lethal policing practices.
Elizabeth Gaynor, followed by Anthony Delavina.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you. I wanted to say thanks for giving me the opportunity to be heard today. I think that we've all been here for four hours, four and a half hours, and you've heard from your people, your community. You've heard the facts. You've heard their pleas. And so I just want to echo all of the sentiments that everyone has said. I'm not going to waste my breath trying to rattle off facts to you that I had researched to go out here and say these things to you so that you will finally listen to us. We should not have to beg for the bare minimum, okay? Who do you work for? What is your priority? I ask you to sit with that question while we're here today. Who do you work for, and what is your priority? Councilwoman Williams, I can see you. Thank you so much for having your cam on this whole time. I do appreciate that. Everyone else, how do I know you're even listening? How do I know you're sitting there paying attention? Do you care about this? We have elected you, and we can absolutely elect your butts out of there. So take that into account. For the rest of my time, I'd like to have a moment of silence for all of your careers if you do not listen to the people outside on this call and around the country begging for help. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Gallego and council members. The civilian review board has been something that I have been advocating for probably over three years now, going back to the home invasion that occurred at my house that the Phoenix Police Department left me out of the investigation. And here I am, seven years later, fighting through the Attorney General's Victims Advocate Service to the Arizona's Victims Rights Law Firm, you know, trying to get all this information done. And if there was a civilian review board at the time, right after the home invasion, where my father, myself, and several family members were trying to get a hold of the police report, that Phoenix refused to release the police report. So this is not just a matter of Phoenix being the most violent police department in the country and also being the largest municipality in this entire country that does not have a true civilian review board because of police control. Phoenix Law Enforcement Association is the one that holds all this city under control. And a lot of these other people that are speaking their minds on here don't realize that your council members are at the mercy of what police says to you. And that's what the city needs to learn, that plea needs to lose control. Their version of a civilian oversight board that's been in place for the last 10 years better not be implanted into this new civilian oversight board. And that's what worries me was Councilman Sal DeCiccio, because I know how closely the police, and I, that increase for the police to be allocated, police enforcement, or police.
Thank you. For our staff, do we have additional speakers on the line?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Denise, could our city clerk please repeat the motion that is in front of us right now?
Mayor, Councilmember Garcia made a motion to approve item 44 and to add full funding for the Office of Accountability and Transparency in the amount of 2.5 million dollars, and we still need a second.
Does it have a second? I didn't hear.
We do not have a second, Councilwoman Williams.
Mayor? Mayor?
Vice Mayor.
Yes, I will go ahead and second that.
Thank you. Do we have additional council member comments?
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Noakowski.
So Mayor, are we required to adopt the balanced budget? I have a question for Jeff.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Noakowski, yes. We are required both by city charter and state statute to adopt a balanced budget.
And Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, this is Ed. Just to clarify, I clarified with the motion maker previously that 2.5 million would be within the balance, so it would come from the contingency fund moved to the general government side, which is where OAT would reside. So the budget would still be in balance, just to confirm that with Councilmember Garcia. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a follow-up question. So what happens if we don't approve the budget?
Mayor, members of the council, there's a whole host of things that really happens if we do not adopt the budget or pass the budget. First and foremost, again, we are required by statute and charter to adopt the budget. If we do not, we are in violation of state statute. Being in violation of state statute exposes the city to a potential 1487 claim, which then means that we would possibly lose state shared revenue that's equal to about $400 million. We also theoretically would be in violation of Home Rule because we don't have an adopted budget. That would expose us to losing 1/3 of our state shared income tax, which is about $80 million. The other unintended consequences are we theoretically would not be able to even levy a property tax because we also don't have an adopted budget. And furthermore, all of the money that we've allocated under the strategic plan for COVID, we would not be able to spend that because we don't have legal appropriation nor legal authority to spend those dollars in the current year or next year.
Mayor, another question would be, we've been looking at the month-to-month budgets, tax revenues that's been collected. Have we received the April tax revenue yet? And if so, what is it?
Councilman Noakowski, members of the council, we will not receive the April actuals until probably the end of next week at the very earliest. What we do have are the March sales tax collections. And those revenues, again, they were really only one week's worth of impairment when you really look at the activity based on when the stay-in-place orders and the emergency orders took place. And we did see signs in there that did give us an idea or an indication of what we're looking at come April revenues, when we get those. Hotel, motel, restaurant, and bar revenues were down anywhere from 30% to 60%.
So what is the estimated cost, or the revenues that we receive for hotel, restaurants, bars, and et cetera?
Mayor, or members of the council, Councilman Noakowski, I'll give you a roundabout number, not an exact number. Hotel, motel, restaurant, and bars, we get it directly from city sales tax. We also get it from state shared sales tax. We approximately take in about $86 million between those major categories.
And Jeff, how much are you estimating because of the COVID-19 that we're going to be actually in a deficit for the City of Phoenix?
Mayor, members of the council, if you recall, starting back in early March, we walked you through four different budget scenarios. Those four scenarios showed deficits ranging from minus 26 million to upwards of minus $128 million, that a bottom-line number. Contained within those, again, that's focusing on solely the general fund. Contained within those numbers, we had revenue losses of anywhere from $50 million to $200 million. On the general fund side, when we look holistically, the number is double that when you talk about some of the other funding sources, as well as the enterprise funds that will also experience some sort of revenue loss.
So really, the April and May's revenue has a big, it tells our story, right? So I know that we're asking some departments to cut 15% to 20% of their budgets. So because of the COVID, because of the economic downturn, do you believe, or future staff cuts or possibility of cutting programs?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Noakowski, it is a possibility. Again, we don't yet have April, May revenues. We won't have those until, you know, June and July, essentially. This time next month, roughly, we'll have the April and May revenues. It is a possibility. We asked every city department to identify potential 25% for reduction. We are still going through those lists of potential reductions and trying to come up with lists that we will share with the mayor, with the council, and with the community when we get to a place in which we kind of definitively know what our budget situation is. Right now, we do not yet know what that is. But it is a possibility that we will be cutting programs and staff.
And Jeff, the reason I'm asking all these questions is that I went through the 2010 budget, and these were some of the questions I wish I would have known to ask ahead of time before voting on different things. The other thing is, a big concern that I have is just our staff alone, you know? In 2010, our staff came together, and they were willing to take furlough days and actually take some cuts there to help us with the budget. But this coming year, I think we need to really look into being good stewards with our tax revenues. And I know that one of the things that we talked about was coming up with a rainy day line, and that goal was 5%, so we would never be in that situation again. What seemed to us in 2010 is that we had a bunch of jobs lined up that weren't filled. Is that the same situation we're in now? Do we actually have jobs on the books that aren't filled? We can actually use that revenue to cover some of the costs? And also, we had a lot of one-time sales of buildings and facilities that were able to help us get over that hump also. Do we have that option this year?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Noakowski, if you recall, we started this budget process with a $28 million surplus. As a result of COVID, and as a result of the economic downturn, that $28 million surplus turned into those four deficit scenarios that I walked you through. And so what we did, and what you did as a council and as a body, you adopted a very methodical process, a deliberate process that did not try to over-correct right now. And so what you did is you, we looked at the short-term deficit, which was $26 million. And to balance that $26 million, we took out all the value for all the vacant positions that were currently on the books. So to your point, there are no more vacancies that we can take credit for. Unlike when we went through it back in 2010, we had lots of vacant positions on the books that we could cut and eliminate and help with the bottom line. That is not the case today. Today, those positions have already been accounted for in what we've already done to balance this budget as we sit here today.
And one last question, Mayor?
Please.
The other question would be that this council decided to go ahead and allocate some extra funding for 911 operators and also for the oats, to start that committee of $400,000, even though that we put a freeze on all of our hiring throughout all of our departments. The mayor and the council, or the majority of the council, felt that it was important enough to fund this program. And the funding that we decided to use was $400,000 until this crisis was over. I think it was Councilmember Williams that said that we should come back in December or so and see if there's other resources that we can use to up that funding. So I just want to make sure that people understand that we're in a crisis of the City of Phoenix. We made cuts throughout all departments, and that we put a hiring freeze, and that we still thought it was very important to go beyond the hiring freeze and to hire staff members for this committee that we made a commitment to the community and basically look for funds to fully fund it later on in the future. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Pettor?
Yes. So since we're talking about the budget and the funding, my understanding is that we may have a hiring freeze, but we don't have a hiring freeze on essential workers.
That is correct.
So where our essential workers are placed or needed, that's, we can hire in that area, and there is funding for that.
That is correct.
Okay. Secondly, my understanding is with COVID-19, if you could please explain the COVID-19 dollars and where they can be spent?
Mayor, members of the council, the COVID-19 dollars, again, the earlier point that I was referencing, in the absence of a budget, we don't have legal authority to spend them. So think about the budget as a box, and I believe I explained this to you the other day. So think about the budget as a box. Everything inside that box is legally approved to be spent. COVID monies came in after the budget was adopted. Those funds came in mid-year. They sit outside that box. So to spend COVID dollars next year, the budget that we're looking at for next year, we need to open that box. You need to approve next year's budget. To spend the COVID dollars in the current year, you also need to open that box a little bit more so that we can create what's called the Funding Plan, which is what you approve on June 17th theoretically. If those things aren't approved, that box stays shut, and COVID stays outside of the legal appropriation. And you cannot spend it because I don't have legal authority to spend it. We'd be in violation of state statute for exceeding our appropriation. Now, what you can spend it on, based on what the federal government has said, it is very gray. Their guidance changes almost on a daily basis. It's basically allowed to be spent right now on things that are directly tied to COVID. So things such as PPE, such as the Brent Mortgage Utility Assistance, the programs that you've already approved in your strategic plan. And there is some guidance that says you can use it on public safety. Now, the guidance on public safety is the part where it's very gray because we still yet don't know definitively. yet don't know definitively if that's COVID-related public safety or all of public safety. And so we're still working through that with the GFOA, with the Treasury, as well as on different calls with the White House, trying to get clarification on what that looks like.
And when you say public safety, COVID-19, it's what is happening since March to this moment. And so those dollars we're able to use during this time span. What I would like to know is, I'm assuming, and we can probably get clarity, is that also the dollars that are being used right now during the protesting and the extra men and women power we can use on COVID-19?
You cannot. Those protests are not COVID-related protests. Those costs are not directly born out of COVID. So I would tell you that no, you cannot use COVID monies to pay for anything related to these protests.
So then, we will, okay. So then, the dollars that then are spent in COVID-19, I don't know how much it is right now in public safety.
We, you mean the actual spending or what you approved as a plan?
Well, that's such an up-down, up-down roller coaster because what we approve in a plan and what we spend are two different things sometimes because there may be an uptick that's not in a plan where we'll have to come back and put it in the plan. So let's get clear on that.
Well, what we, Mayor, members of the council, what we have as far as the CRF portion of COVID dollars that we've got, the coronavirus relief funds, we've got $293 million that was allocated to the city of Phoenix directly from the Treasury. This council took action and strategically allocated that into three areas. $75 million for community services, and that's where your rent and utility assistance programs, your refugee programs, your vulnerable population programs, that's where that's contained. We also had $75 million allocated for direct city services, which were directly impacted as a result of COVID, mostly covering things like PPE and things of that nature, facility retrofits, things like that to bring people back to work safely. And then we did put $143 million in reserve. That reserve was created specifically in case the Treasury does change their guidance and allow us to use those funds to offset COVID-related or expenses related to public safety or to be used to offset lost revenue. Those are the things that we put those funds over on that side of the House for.
Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor and then Councilwoman Williams.
Same one, at least they're debating.
May next?
Yeah, Vice Mayor and then Councilwoman Williams.
Perfect. So I just wanted, so I just wanted to talk a little bit about, a year ago, we gathered to hear the voices of our community hurting in a very similar situation. Now, here we are again, hearing the calls for change, accountability, and transparency. Earlier this year, the majority of this council voted in favor of creating the Office of Accountability and Transparency and the Volunteer Civilian Review Board. If our city's financial officers believe that they can find the resources to fully fund this office, I believe that now is the time for them to do so. We can no longer put a band- put a Band-Aid on this issue. If we're going to create meaningful change, we need to show our commitment. A year from now, I know we want to be back here having a different conversation. However, that is going to take us not only prioritizing this as a city, but for the public to join us in starting some meaningful dialogue. On Saturday, Police Chief Williams, Mayor Gallego, and Councilman Nowakowski spoke to the press about the need for policy change to address the needs of our community. I believe that fully funding the Office of Accountability and Transparency is one of these policies, and this is the reason why I want to support this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams.
I have been around and done a lot of budgets over the years, and I know it's really important to use the process. And it is more important this year, I think, because we have all that COVID money in this budget. And we want to get that out to all the people that need food, that need housing, that need transportation, that need all these services and businesses. And if we hold this up, that's not going to happen. And if we jeopardize our budget rating, our bond rating, by taking it out of the discretionary money we have set aside, it's only going to cost us more in the wrong way. And I am very, very concerned. We're not out of this. We have hotels that don't work, we have all the convention centers that have no customers. People are not eating out, and it's going to take us a long time to get to normal. But the council passed the Oak Committee. That is set. It will happen. And the money that's allocated today is enough to get us started for the first year. So I am saying, I think, I'm offering the motion to move, make a secondary motion, a substitute, to accept and approve the budget as presented today.
I will second it.
Oh, second it. Michael, go ahead, Michael.
No problem.
Mayor.
Councilman DeCicio.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, and appreciate your patience, and I think you've handled the meeting quite well today. You know, congratulations to you on that. I also want to congratulate Jeff Barton. This is probably one of the best budgets I've ever seen. Jeff, I generally, well, generally, I don't think I've ever voted for a budget, but at the end of the day, I will support Councilwoman Williams' motion to support this budget for multiple reasons. One, because of Jeff, literally, you're the best budget director that we've ever had at the city of Phoenix. I mean, your numbers are insanely correct. I mean, they're within just a matter of just a few percentage points, and that just doesn't happen anywhere in the country, I mean, anywhere. So Ed, you've put together a really good team. The second thing is, and I'm speaking to this motion and the other one too, nothing is going to be cutting our relationship with ICE, even though most of that is with Polk and Zon's office at the county's office. But no one's cutting that. But I do want to talk about the protesters and the police officers and how they've handled themselves. The real story that should come out, and I hope it does, is that there have been zero arrests in the last two days, zero, compared to what's happening around the country. Our Phoenix Police Department, I want to give them incredible amounts of accolades for the way they've handled themselves, and including the peaceful protesters. I think it's unfortunate the peaceful protesters were mixed in with some of the agitators, the individuals that have been trying to create chaos. I think that's a really bad example for our city. But if you look at it yesterday, because of the curfew and what Governor Ducey did, I'm not a big fan of curfews because I think it stifles our civil rights. But here, I think it worked. Matter of fact, it worked really well. I mean, right at 7:45, what did everyone do yesterday? They went to their cars. They went home, no arrests. I mean, it was, that's what this country was built on. This country was built on peaceful protest. It was built on the ability to protest your government. And I think that's fantastic, the way they've handled themselves. But no city can say zero arrests for two days in a row. It'd be nice to have three, but let's see. But I do want to give special thanks to our police officers that were out there. I think it's unfortunate. Not one protest, not one, that talked about those four police officers that were ambushed in St. Louis. The one retired police officer who was murdered in St. Louis. In Oakland, a police officer or federal officer was sitting in his car and brutally murdered. Where are they? Where are the voices for those individuals? Where are they? We've heard this constant attack on our police, and you've heard it here today. They're violent, they're this, they're that. No, they're not. They are good people. These are individuals that have protected us. They're doing everything they can. They have families, they have children, they go to church on Sundays. They do everything right in their lives. And to have to endure this kind of stuff, I think is just horrifying. And to sit here and listen and have the public believe that a few individuals, because maybe 183 people came here and spoke them, that's great. We have a city of 1.7 million people. Our city defends and believes in our police officers and have believed that they are doing the right thing every single day. They believe that, and they believe it strongly. So what we're hearing here are individuals that have come down, and I think that's great that they are. But we've got to remember, we also represent the 1.7 million people that are not here today. And those individuals believe in our police officers. The vote to move this Oat or whatever you want to call it, this, you know, call it civilian review, I call it a police-hating committee, but to move that thing forward is more than a slap in the face of our police officers that have worked hard to protect us and to do the right thing. I am embarrassed for them. For those of you police officers that are here today and listening to this, I am sorry you had to hear this. I am sorry you had to endure this. I am sorry that nobody is standing up for you. My God, you do everything right. Your family, your wives and your husbands that are home, your spouses, have to deal with this stuff. And you know what? You may be along for the ride, but you know who has to endure the heavy pain of this? The spouses. The spouses are the ones who would have to deal with this, and their children. I am sorry that, I don't know why anybody in their right mind would want to be a police officer today. I don't know why. After all this stuff that you've heard and everything that you've heard that's been going on, my strong apologies to you and your families, and especially to your spouses because, and especially to your children that have had to put up with this [BLEEP] and this constant crap that keeps going on and on and on and lack, and these other councilmembers are sitting on their [BLEEP] not doing anything to protect you. Screw it. I'm telling you right now, the public supports you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman, I would ask that you respect the language of the council chambers.
I have, and I did.
Mayor, should we call for the vote?
Excellent. Roll call.
And this is on the substitute motion, correct? Correct.
I'm sorry. Yes?
Which motion?
This is for a substitute motion on 44, made by Councilwoman Williams to approve the budget, item number 44, ordinance 46650, the tentative budget for 2020, 2021, as presented in the agenda, and seconded by Councilman Nowakowski. DeCicio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Mayor, may I explain my vote?
Please do.
What we're about to do right now is ignore over 2,700 people who have submitted comments, thousands, over 1,000 people that were outside today, and the over 100 comments we had in our meeting today. No, Sal, this country was not built the way you spoke of it. This country was built on the genocide of indigenous people and on slavery. And the institutionalized racism that we see today that's being put forth by what we saw with George Floyd is an extension of that. And so I want everyone to understand what we're doing today is we're turning our backs on a crisis, on uprising that's happening across the country. We actually have an opportunity to spend less than half a percent of the budget to try to address this issue. And so if we move forward with what's been proposed, we're ignoring that. We're ignoring the cries of the community. We're ignoring the daughter of George Floyd who spoke in public today for the first time, not realizing probably that she's not going to see her father again. We're ignoring the fact that Muhammad died in a very similar manner in our Maryville Community Center. There just wasn't video of the situation. Whether people die with a knee to their neck or where they were shot, like the dozens that have been shot by our police department, they still deserve or just process. And so I vote no to ignore the community. And I want to end by saying, Black Lives Matter.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Castor.
I'm going to explain my vote. There is deep history, deep history in this system. And our culture has changed. And the culture of our community has changed, and it has changed within color. Yet the system hasn't changed, and the system still operates the same way. And I'm not just talking, I'm talking educational system, every system that we follow was built on the backs of many that have suffered and that were before us. And what I have to say is, the 2.5 was given to us yesterday and was told that we could do the 2.5, and that they were going to get it out of the contingency fund. That's what people don't know, the background. People don't know what was promised yesterday. People don't understand what is happening. And in this system, the city of Phoenix system, that's what happened. They said, we have 2.5 million, we can fund Oat. We need to pass this budget. And that's how this dialogue started. We were all okay, and we said we were okay with the 400, but yesterday, the dialogue started. And there's only so many members at the high top that started the dialogue, that created this mess. And what I mean by that, created the wedge that is happening right now. So you guys stop and think, who that leader out of the nine said that? It is wrong and what is happening at this moment. And to Councilman DeCicio, this has nothing, this has to do with our community, which includes your constituents that you ignore. And we listen and we hear the police. I understand what happens in those communities. I know, I have lived it. It has been an issue with me. I have been affected by it. But yet, we have people telling us to stand down and not push for what we believe in. And that is wrong. Wrong all the way across the board. Because what we deserve is equity. What our systems deserve all across around this world and in the city of Phoenix is equity. And I cannot believe I could not vote for a motion that was sitting on the table. Anybody else could have said, after that motion went through, could have said, I'm giving, I would like another motion. It was done with Oat. And I find that unfair, and I find it very privileged. I vote no.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yeah, just, Mayor, explain my vote very briefly. I'm not voting for a budget that has Oat in it, and this budget does, so I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Williams.
Yeah.
Guardado.
Mayor, can I explain my vote?
Please.
So, I mean, I already gave comment a few, a few minutes ago. I just hope, I'm not exactly sure how this is going to go, go down today, but I am, I am very serious when I say that I do not want to be in the same situation that we are in today, the same way that we were in this a year ago. I am committed to making that change. And as a, as a former organizer, I think that is what I bring to the table, is bringing people together. And I'm hoping that after this vote is done, a couple of the council members, or whomever wants to join me, we need to start dialogue. We need to take a lot more leadership on a lot, on a lot of these issues. And we need to make sure that we can all come together and find, and find a resolution to everything that's going on. And we start these conversations as hard as they can be and as difficult as they can be, and that we are inclusive about this, and that we include everyone, and that we're able, and that we're able to rebuild from, from what is happening right now through our, throughout our country. There's a lot of things that we don't have control over, and I understand that. But I hope that we can all join together and be more united after, after this vote, so that we can actually make decisions and that we can actually show more leadership for all of our constituents. So on this one, I'm going to be voting no.
Gallego.
Our community is hurting right now. We have seen people take to the streets and ask for relief. I would like the chance to vote on Councilmember Garcia's motion. I believe that we need the Office of Accountability and Transparency to bring this community together. It is an unprecedented time in our community. I believe in our city employees and the work we are doing, but I believe that we can have a safer department if we come together, if we build trust and transparency with our community, if we have dialogue. I would like to see mediation so that people can really sit down together and talk with each other. This is an important time, and I want the chance to vote on Councilmember Garcia's motion, so I vote no.
The motion fails four to five.
Do we have any additional comments before we do roll call on the original motion? Roll call. And I guess, could the city clerk please repeat the motion?
Yes, Mayor, this motion was made by Councilmember Garcia to approve item 44 and add full funding for the Office of Accountability and Transparency in the amount of $2.5 million. And seconded by Council, by Vice Mayor Guardado. DeCecio.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
No.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
No.
DeCecio.
No.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
No.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
That motion fails four to five.
Is there an opportunity to offer an additional motion?
Mayor, I'll ask the city attorney to answer that.
Mayor and council, you, council can offer an additional motion as long as it is different than the motions that have already been presented.
Mayor, could I make a, a motion and maybe, a directive to staff?
Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you. I think I would like to make a motion that we approve the budget and that we direct staff to start looking immediately at ways to find funding as quickly as possible for our civilian review board. Thank you.
Was that second from Councilwoman Williams?
Any council member comment?
I have a comment.
Councilwoman Pastor.
So, Mr. Barton, where would you find that money? Because I know where you're going to find that money, because yesterday that was the conversation, but please let put it on the record.
Mayor, members of the council, if you adopt the budget as is, what I would do is, any savings that we have at year-end, I would use those savings to fund Oat. And I would put them into a set aside for specifically Oat when you need them. Because based on the conversation that I've had with you and Councilman Garcia, you don't need the full $2.5 million for Oat day one. You don't. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, and we've got time to, to kind of deal with it. And so I would find it out of year-end savings. That way, I'm not affecting the budget, I'm not cutting the budget, I'm not affecting my bond rating, I'm not doing any of those things that would be adverse to the budget.
And how much do you think that savings will be?
Uh, it's kind of hard to answer that question, because as you alluded to earlier in your comments, we are spending money that we didn't budget with protests and, and staff costs there. But again, we are banking on budget, our savings. I can't tell you specifically how much we're going to have. We are counting on some of it to balance the budget, as you also know, because I, I made that part of my presentation as well. But we have stopped departments from spending non-essential spending. And we have, with the hiring freeze in effect, we are generating savings. The real question just becomes if our revenue numbers are different than what I expected or estimated, but we will have savings at year-end.
And so my understanding is that when COVID-19, and we get the clarity on COVID-19, and specifically in public safety, and this is what the public needs to understand, specifically in public safety, when we use the COVID-19 to pay public safety, then those dollars will then be used or considered to be used in other departments, and then we will be able to be whole, and then we have the COVID-19 additional dollars. So there will be money moving everywhere where Oat could be funded.
Mayor, members of the council, to kind of clarify exactly what you're saying, so it's clear to everybody, if we are able to utilize the COVID relief dollars on public safety, what that does is it allows us to then reduce the amount of cuts that we would have to make to those essential programs that we've all been hearing about today, from parks to libraries to neighborhood services and all of those things. That's the way those funds would be utilized, if, again, we get the guidance and clarity that we can do that.
So then we would, you know, essentially be trying to minimize having any cuts.
I wouldn't say any cuts. I would say it would minimize the cuts that we possibly have to make.
Yes.
That is correct.
I just want that on the record. That it'd be minimized. It could not be 15 or 25%. It could be lower, we don't know, but, like, anything, anything, nothing is predictable. And, but that's where, where we're looking at and how we're going to move forward. That's my understanding of what I was told.
That's what I would do.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a follow-up question on the COVID money. So with the leftover COVID money, your opinion, will we still be seeing layoffs in the future?
Councilman Nowakowski, I wish I was, I wish I was as good as Councilman DeCecio gave me credit for, and I could answer that question definitively, but I, I honestly do not know. What I can tell you, just like I told Councilwoman Pastor, that those COVID relief dollars, they could go a long way to helping us offset our deficit. So if we're able to use what we have in reserve to offset our deficit, we theoretically would have to make fewer cuts than, than what we are initially looking at on the front end. But I, I can't, I can't tell you definitively that we won't have to make layoffs.
So Jeff, when are we expecting the April tax revenue report to come in? Because that would be a nice dash, or to look at, to see what the future numbers would look for the City of Phoenix, especially with May and, and June coming up, right?
Correct. Mayor, members of the council, as you know, the state collects all sales tax for us, started a couple of years ago. So we're waiting on them. They generally close the period, it, around now. It takes them a couple of days, and then it takes my staff a couple of days to review it. Generally, we have everything all buttoned up by the third week of the month, if we're lucky. So within two weeks, I should know what those numbers are, by the time you vote again on the final budget.
We would have it by the time we vote on the final budget, right?
Hopefully, yes.
Vice Mayor.
Never mind, Mayor. Jeff answered, answered my questions through the questions that Councilwoman Pastor asked, but thank you.
Any additional council member questions? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Mayor, I'm going to be voting no. There's not going to be any additional money at the end of the year anyways. I mean, people need to understand that. There is no other extra money we'll be actually cutting. So I don't know how you find something when you don't have any, but my, my vote is no, Mayor. Thank you.
Garcia.
I'll be voting no. This does not assure police accountability or transparency.
Nowakowski.
I'll be voting yes, and then we, and waiting for that report on the 17th.
Pastor.
No.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Motion fails four to five.
Mayor, may we take a break?
Excellent. We will recess for 20 minutes.
Mayor.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Pastor, yes?
I actually would like to continue these items to June 17th.
No.
Julie.
Mayor, I'd like to take a break, then.
Okay, all right. Which one?
Does 20 minutes seem?
Budget items cannot be continued.
So we will take?
What budget?
The further budget items. There, there are some other budget items that need to be considered.
So we will, the council will recess the council meeting. Good evening. I reconvene the Phoenix City Council meeting. I move to continue items 45 and 46 to a special formal meeting to be called for Friday, June 5th at 1:00 p.m.
Second. Mayor, can everyone make that meeting?
Mayor, I can't make.
Mayor, this is Sal. I cannot. I've already mentioned that to Ed even before this meeting.
Is there a time on Friday that would work?
I'm traveling all day Friday, Mayor.
Okay.
Can we do Monday?
I can do Monday, Mayor.
Tomorrow, or Monday, tomorrow's probably better. I've already sent a letter requesting a reconsideration to the city manager mayor of the budget item. So, you know, without politicizing it or anything else, I just wanted it to be a reconsideration of the budget. So, but I think even tomorrow would work better.
I have a graduation tomorrow.
We do have to do 24 hours notice, so we would have to begin at 8:15, which seems inadvisable.
Mayor, I can do Friday, any, anytime Friday.
I can do Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
Jeff.
I can do Saturday.
I can do Saturday. Jeff, do you, could you tell us if Monday works?
Mayor, members of the council, Monday will work. It would just be tight, but we could, we could make it work. It, it's just tight with the filing of the forms, but it could, it could work. Yes, I would advise Monday earlier than later.
Can we do it at 9:00? You know, do your staff, I don't need enough, has that enough time?
Yes, Councilwoman Pastor, 9 o'clock Monday would work for staff.
Everybody works for everybody else, or no?
It, it doesn't work for me. I have something at 9:00 a.m. on Monday. I could do, I could do a little bit later.
11:00?
We could do 11 o'clock on Monday, 11:00 a.m.
Okay. Done.
Betty.
Consent.
Deal.
Okay. I then amend my motion. I move to continue items 45 and 46 to a special formal meeting to be called for Monday at 11:00 a.m.
Second.
Okay, so, do we need a roll call?
Mayor?
Councilman DeCecio.
Just a quick question, Mayor. Are we going to also be going through more, more cards again, or what's going to happen that day? Generally, when, once you hear the cards, you don't have to do them again, but that's, that's your call, Mayor.
I, I do believe that we have, we have heard from residents, and so we would just vote on the budget, if.
Okay.
Mayor?
Councilman Nowakowski, I think I heard next. Council, Councilmember Garcia?
Yes. Could we move the rest of the agenda, not just the item, to Monday?
I'm ready to hear the other items.
I'm good at listening to all the items.
We've had quite a few people on line waiting patiently.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with all of them tonight.
So I will, I think I'm going to do a roll call on this item, and then we can move to discussion of the remainder of the agenda. And, well, let's just go ahead and do a roll call. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes?
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski. Pastor. Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
That says 8-0.
Okay. So, that moves, that is the budget portion of our agenda. We have maybe 15 items remaining.
Mayor, I'm fine staying, getting through the agenda. A lot of people on line who have been waiting patiently for these other items.
It'll be fun.
Yeah.
You think we can move quickly?
We on item 56, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we are on item 56.
I, I would support a continuance if people are tired, but I want to be respectful of people who've hung with us.
Mayor?
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
So I would like to make a motion to move the rest of the items for Monday. I think people, I think people are tired. I think there's people that, that I know are, are wanting I think people, I think people are tired. I think there's people that, that I know are, are wanting to go home. So I'd like to make a motion to move these items, um, for Monday.
Okay.
Okay, and so the motion would be for our remaining agenda items to be continued to our special council meeting on Monday. Any discussion?
Mayor, and I just think that we have a lot of people that have been sitting online waiting to speak on other items. And I think we need to be respectful of that, but I will be a no vote. Thank you.
Uh, seeing no further, folks looking for, uh, comments, roll call.
DeCecio.
Yeah.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
No.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado. Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes seven-two.
Thank you. With that, um, I think city cler, uh, do we have any additional business, or we can adjourn?
Mayor, we can adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you.